Good evening, everyone. Our meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. And can we have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
President Vartan? And President Protem Hairston?
Here. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read notices regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
So now I am going to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? And I know that this is firefighters’ month, I believe, and so I think I am going to ask Chief to lead us, start it with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I got everybody nervous there, thought we’ve forgotten the Pledge of Allegiance. So we will begin with approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session of our last council meeting?
Actually, Council President, it’s April 4th and April 18th.
April 4th and April 18th, okay. So let me reread that again. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session agenda for April 4th and April 18th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we’ll move on to our reports, and we’ll begin with our mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President Protem. Just a few announcements, and welcome, everyone. PSENG is continuing overnight work to replace aging gas pipes on Springfield Avenue in the central retail business district in our town. Over the next week, PSENG will be performing overnight work on Springfield Avenue between Beechwood Road and Ken Place Boulevard between the hours of 9:30 p.m. and 5:30 a.m., where they’re permitting. On-street parking spaces in the area will be flagged for no parking after 6:00 p.m. Streets are subject to full closure during project work. More information on ongoing PSENG work throughout Summit is available at cityofsummit.org/gaswork. Secondly, some important dates to keep in mind, voting in the Tuesday, June 6, 2023, primary election. The deadline to register to vote in the June 6 primary election is Tuesday, May 16. The deadline to apply by mail for a mail-in ballot is Tuesday, May 30. The deadline to apply in person at the Elizabeth and Westfield County Clerk’s offices for a mail-in ballot is Monday, June 5 at 3:00 p.m. Visit cityofsummit.org/elections for more information on the June 6 primary election. And lastly, the annual Police Athletic League Pet Show will be held on Saturday, May 13, on the Village Green located at 356 Broad Street. Registration for the free event begins at 1:00 p.m. and judging begins at 1:30 p.m. In the event of rain, the pet show will be held on Sunday, May 14. For more information, please go to SummitCommunityPrograms.com. And that’s all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now we’ll move on to Michael Rogers for the city administrator report.
Thank you, Council President Protem. This is going to be a little bit longer than I typically give a report, so I apologize for the length and reading a very long statement that I have. And this will pertain to the temporary pedestrian mall on Maple Street and the creation of that, and really try to go through the timeline that, based on all the conversations, public discussions at past council meetings, and I don’t know how many council meetings we’ve spoken to, but particularly what just went on at the April 18, 2023 meeting. And for the public’s information, just to, this statement will be on the website tomorrow, along with attachments that I reference in this statement. So I just, please, just listen. There’s going to be a lot that I’m going to, a lot of different statutes I’m going to, I’m going to go through, and names that I, I’m trying to just put together for what I have been looking at for the last couple of weeks on this issue, to try to just reconstruct what happened for the, some of you know this, this topic better than others, there’s many that don’t, so I’m just going to try to outline, and from what I, I’ve been able to find, and to just help the council and the public understand a little bit about what happened, and to give you some context of how this was playing out, and perhaps to explain ultimately what happened. Okay, so I’m going to give you an actual timeline of events that I, that I know, and these are email communications, as well as just conversations that I’ve had with the main person who had been dealing with the DOT, Aaron Schreger, who is our Department Director of Community Services, as well as city engineer. So I’m just going to, I’m going to go bullet-by-bullet here of the timeline. So on February 15, 2022, the common council approved a resolution authorizing a temporary and extended closure of Maple Street, which would become effective upon approval from the New Jersey Transit, Jersey Department of Transportation Bureau of Traffic Engineer. And I’ll refer to that as the NJDOT from here and after. For prior year closures of Maple Street, this was the standard process whereby council authorized an action and then subsequently sought NJDOT approval. On February 24, 2022, Aaron Schreger, Director of Community Services and City Engineer, sent a letter to Jamie Oplinger, Executive Manager of NJDOT, along with a Maple Street detour map, requesting approval to close Maple Street from April 15, 2022 to November 30, 2022. On March 2, 2022, Director Schreger had a conversation with the NJDOT about the city’s approved February 15, 2022, resolution to close Maple Street. The NJDOT verbally stated that closures under Governor Murphy’s Public Health Emergency Executive Orders would no longer be permitted. It was brought to the city’s attention that the governor’s relevant executive orders were going to be rescinded, and another executive order extension would not be issued. Further, NJDOT responded that a request for a closure permit would need to be filed through the NJDOT Major Access Group. In a March 4, 2022, email to Director Schreger, Jamie Oplinger of NJDOT outlined necessary steps for a major access pre-application meeting request and requisite information to provide. The first step in the process is for a municipality to submit a formal written request for a pre-application meeting with the Major Access Group. One project example that the city currently is going through the Major Access Permit process is for the median barrier construction project, project near Fernwood and Route 24. That pre-application process commenced in October 2021, which the project has yet to be given the go-ahead to start from the NJDOT. Just to give you some context of what, how long this process may take for certain projects. So on March 8, 2022, Director Schreger emailed Rebecca Schwartz, a senior aide to Governor Murphy, this is the city’s intergovernmental liaison for the governor’s office, Mayor Rades was also copied, informing her of the city’s communications with Jamie Oplinger on street closure and the suggested option of applying for a major access permit to close Maple Street. Director Schreger had concerns about a lengthy Major Access Permit process and whether it was the appropriate application for the type of temporary closure intended for Maple Street. On March 9, 2022, Rebecca Schwartz communicated with Director Schreger, Mayor Rades was copied, that she would follow up at the NJDOT and get back to the city. On March 16, 2022, the city’s engineer division submitted a request for a pre-application meeting to the NJDOT as a part of the Major Access Permit process. In addition to pursuing a permit through the Major Access Group, Director Schreger concurrently explored additional statutory/regulatory methods by which Maple Street could be closed on a temporary basis. On April 4, 2022, an NJDOT project engineer, engineer from the Major Access Permit Office corresponded to Sam Kotzaurus, I think that’s pronounced, Assistant City Engineer, regarding temporary closure of Maple Street. NJDOT determined that the pre-application meeting for the Maple Street temporary closure did not meet criteria with the pre-application submission. After discussions with the NJDOT and various engineering colleagues throughout the state, Director Schreger determined that Maple Street could be closed on a temporary basis with the establishment of a pedestrian mall in a special improvement district, and I’ll refer to that as a CID here and after, in accordance with NJSA 40:56-65. Significantly, Maple Street is contained in Summit’s CID and does not intersect and/or but any state highway. On April 8, 2022, Director Schreger sent an email message to the Council Capital Projects Committee, which comprises of council members Little and O. Sullivan, copying Council President Fox and myself, about an update on NJDOT’s denial of the city’s requests for a closure more than eight, more than 48 hours. This denial was the result of the governor’s executive order, a 292, which lifted the COVID-19 public health emergency as of March 4, 2022. It communicated the following: One option to consider was to continue the pre-application process with the NJDOT Major Access Group, which require a lengthy review by NJDOT. Another option identified was the concept of the pedestrian mall, which is a section contained within the CID law, which is 40:56-65, and requires an ordinance to be adopted by a governing body. The NJDOT did not advise Director Schreger that it would need to approve such an ordinance creating a pedestrian mall. Further, the statute does not contain any provision that the NJDOT approval is required for the creation of a pedestrian mall in a CID. On April 19, 2022, common council introduced an ordinance establishing a temporary pedestrian mall on Maple Street in accordance with NJSA 40:56-65. Property owners within a 200-foot radius of Maple Street were duly notified by certified mail prior to the public hearing. On May 8, on May 3, 2022, the common council adopted the temporary pedestrian mall ordinance. On May 18, 2022, following the passage and publication of the ordinance creating the temporary pedestrian mall, Director Schreger and Mayor Rades spoke with NJDOT Deputy Chief of Staff Vanessa Holman, who indicated that NJDOT was considering streamlining the process for street closures in the future. On May 23, 2022, Milburn’s, Milburn Township’s engineering department requested that Director Schreger send a copy of the city’s recent, recently enacted ordinance. Then on June 28, 2022, when asked whether the city sent the ordinance to NJDOT for approval, Director Schreger advised that it was not sent, it was not sent to the NJDOT as he did not believe at the time the applicable statute required such approval. On June 21, 2022, Milburn Township passed an almost identical ordinance creating a temporary pedestrian mall on its Main Street, which is a Milburn CID and does not intersect and/or but any state highway. Milburn Township temporarily closed Main, temporary closed Main Street in late June After temporary closing Main Street, Milburn Township sent its ordinance with a Main Street detour map to NJDOT for review and approval on July 1, 2022. Two weeks later, and after almost one month after passage of the Milburn ordinance and the temporary closure of Main Street, NJDOT sent a July 15, 2022, letter to Milburn approving its ordinance, creating a temporary pedestrian mall in its CID, an ordinance nearly identical to the city’s ordinance. On August 2, 2022, Director Schreger corresponded with Ms. Oplinger of NJDOT, who advised that there was a temporary and a permanent process by which the city could close Maple Street going forward. The temporary option, street closure more than 48 hours but less than one year, was to enact an ordinance pursuant to NJSA 40:67-16.9 and submit requirements under NJAC 16:27-4.3C to the NJDOT Bureau of Traffic, Traffic Engineering. The other permanent closure option, more than one calendar year, was to adopt an ordinance creating a pedestrian mall pursuant to NJSA 40:56. Additionally, Ms. Oplinger specifically cited Milburn’s recently enacted ordinance creating a temporary pedestrian mall in a CID, which is, again, nearly identical to the city had adopted on May 3, 2022. Ms. Oplinger also noted that either way of establishing a pedestrian mall by ordinance, temporary or permanent, was acceptable. Please note that in the August 2, and again, you can read the email exchange and then attachment, please note that in this August 2, 2022, email, NJDOT attached a sample ordinance for future use in consideration that relied upon an entirely different statutory provision, NJSA 40:67-16.9, which is a, which is different than creating a temporary pedestrian mall in a CID in accordance with NJSA 40:56. In conclusion, the common council passed the temporary pedestrian mall ordinance in accordance with the law. Like prior Maple Street closures, the council believed that the temporary pedestrian mall ordinance would be sent to the NJDOT for approval after adoption, as had been done in previous, each, the previous two years, 2020 and 2021. However, at the time, given the city administration’s understanding that there was no clear process in place that required NJDOT approval for a temporary pedestrian mall until August 2022, the ordinance was never sent. Once the city knew Milburn had transmitted its pedestrian mall ordinance to the NJDOT and it received quick approval, we should have done so as well. It is reasonable to conclude the city would have received approval of its temporary pedestrian mall ordinance. Nevertheless, as a city administrator, I take responsibility for not following up on whether the adopted ordinance was forwarded to the DOT for approval. I hope this statement clarifies for the common council and public what occurred during the process to temporarily close Maple Street in 2022, and I sincerely apologize for not providing this statement sooner to the governing body and the Summit community. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Rogers, and I want to thank you for the in-depth research that you did to give us a full accounting of everything that happened. There was a lot of information you all have received. It is going to be available to you as well on the city’s website, and I encourage you to read it and digest it, because what I want you to know that, on behalf of our Council President Vartan and on behalf of this entire council, we welcome scrutiny, we welcome questions, and we welcome the opportunity to clarify. We believe in our staff. We thank our staff for the outstanding job that they did in some of the most horrific times, not only in our city, in this country, across the world, and our staff showed up. And so I want to thank you, Administrator Rogers, for the research that you did and relaying that a mistake was made, but that this council did operate within the law. And with that, I want to move on to our next report on the agenda from our fire chief, and it will be an update on the firehouse and one other item. So Chief Evers, please join us.
Sure, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, just going to go over a little quick update in the firehouse, a little bit of financing, we’ll get into what’s been evolving so far. A lot of progress on our new building. To be real quick, we’re about halfway through our budget for our firehouse. Got about a balance, $8,000 enough to pay. We’re about seven, we’re about 14 applications into the process. Change orders, we filled about 20 change orders, potential change orders. We approved about three so far, and we have a couple more we’re looking at. Most of the change orders pertain to, a lot is site excavation, the unknowns, a couple things in a building for small little structural reasons and some footing, things of that nature that we’re looking at. So in the next meeting or two, we’ll have another resolution for some more potential change orders coming at us. But overall, we’re well within our budget, everything’s going well. We’ve been keeping a sharp eye on the change orders, not, not approving anything that is not necessarily deemed important to the project, so we’ve been keeping a sharp eye, myself and Deputy Chief and Bimbo, and Lieutenant Harndy, which is on the project team that’s helped manage the project. So thanks for the good work of the mayor and the other fellows first foundation. We have reached our goal that we set for fundraising, so great, great amount of time to do that. A lot, a lot of good work went into that, and it’s still an ongoing effort. I was glad having some fundraisers to help support us as well, so we thank everybody that, that got through it. You can still, you can still register online to buy some bricks, the website’s still up there. We have not closed the date yet, it will be, be closed in another couple of weeks, and through the PIO, through Summit, we’ll let the public know when that deadline is. All right, to be real quick, I’m just going to do a brief, I got a little bit of slide presentation, I’ll just talk through it as we go. So basically, building is more than 10%, it’s closed in, all the exterior walls are built, that brown color you see on the, on the, on the blockwork, that’s all waterproofing for efficiency. The roof is all completed, the actual finished roof is not on yet, but everything is closed in, it’s sealed off. All the frame is completed, the first floor bays are all constructed, the upper floors, where you would have the administration offices, everything is all framed in, closed in, almost 90% electrical wiring is installed, all the HVAC, the plumbing work, that’s all installed, roughed in. The roofs on the upper floors are in, all the components are getting ready to be installed on the roof on the upper floors. And we’re also working with, a lot of the site work has been done, we have to put in two fire hydrants there in the building, we also have to do some extra conduit work, work through, with the engineering’s office, to do a little work on the traffic light on the corner of Broad Street where it comes into the hospital there, so that’s all built up there. We’re also working with some of the issues with Energy to the Transit, working through them, working through some of the requirements to work alongside their, their right-of-way, we’re working very closely with them to make sure that some, any issues that can arise, that they’ll be addressed quickly. There’s also some issues, there’s also some things that are coming up, a lot of our training props, we’ve been, a lot of infrastructure being worked, a lot of our training props, I got a couple of slides that’ll show you rendering what it looks like inside the building when it’s going to be completed. So this is a sketch of the building, you’re looking at now is facing Broad Street, the railroad track to beat your back, and this whole area here is the main part of our training prop. The highlighted area that’s in red is going to represent like a typical downtown streetscape of Summit, a lot of our, a lot of our main hazards in town are the downtown area, a lot of old building, old construction. So this area here you see in the red, and when it’s above it, kind of simulates what we were, we were encountering in a lot of the residential homes and also in, you know, uptown Summit, a lot of our training props will be installed there. It’s just another view of that same entrance, over to the far left, you see where the glass is, that’s the main entrance off of Broad Street, so when the public comes into the building, they’ll have a, there’ll be a glass open, and you can still look into the firehouse, look into the bays, and the stairs that circulate around the, the elevator that takes you up to the Abbott office. All right? But overall, everything’s going very well, we’re on target, we should be, have the product hopefully completed, construction-wise, midsummer. The next step moving forward is starting to put brick, they call it the water table of the building, the first four feet, all the brickwork was installed, the backside of the building, laundry to the transit, right-of-way, we have another brick wall that’s going up there as well, so things are moving along very well, working very closely with, with the contractors. We continue to have our bi-weekly meetings with the, my staff, the architects and engineers to go over, to look ahead on project and to keep the product on budget and on, and on schedule. All right? So with that said, I’d like to take any questions related to the new firehouse?
Thank you, Chief. We had the pleasure of having a tour of the building, and so we will open it up for any comments or questions from the council.
Just a quick one. When will you start seeing brick on the outside?
It’s actually up there now.
Oh, good.
Yes, if you look at, if you drive by, the first four feet from the ground up, those brickwork was all completed. And then there’s a flashing that comes over, then there’s going to be some limestone coping, and then they’ll continue with all the brickwork. But almost all the water, water, water table brickwork’s almost completely throughout, oh, around the building.
That’s, that’s great.
Yeah, that’s going through. The only thing, the only thing you won’t see for a while are the windows, that’s pretty, pretty much put, installed after all the brickwork’s done, for the last part, we’ll be putting in the windows and doors. But it’s actually already, we’re actually already have sheetrock on the wall. If anybody has any work done at their house, they know when you get sheetrock on the wall, it’s a big milestone, so they actually started sheetrocking this week, so a lot of the upper floors, so it’s moved along very well.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay, Chief, I know you have another report to give to us.
I do have one more thing, so as Council Member Hairston, this, this year is, every year down in Emmitsburg, Maryland, the National Fallen Fire Foundation honors all the firefighters that were killed in the previous year. So this year, they’ve been doing this for 42 years. This year, we’ll be honoring 144 farmhand who killed in 2022. The foundation’s mission is to honor American fallen firefighters, support their families, colleagues, organizations, and their work to reduce preventable firefighter death and injury. They spent a lot of good work coming up with safety initiatives that they put out all over the country. They have a team of their staff travels, played around the country, talking to firefighters about its safety initiatives. Cancer is a big deal in the firehouse, they talk about cancer prevention. They also work very closely with a survivor network of all the past families that were affected by line-of-duty death. They have conferences around the country, they spend a lot of time with them. They also spend a lot of time with children, all the, all the families that are the children that were lost to firefighters. They have a great, they have a bunch of camps, this year actually, in June 11, it’s going to be in New Jersey. Once again, our team from Summit is one of the main contacts for New Jersey to help to host the event up in Kent Mason. They bring all the kids in that were killed in line of duty, their parents, and they have support, you know, it’s long camp for the weekend, so they’re very good event they have there. Team Summit, from Summit, for the last 20 years, we’ve been sending a team down to the grounds. The event is on Sunday, our team gets there on a Wednesday, and we work for four days to set all the academy up for the weekend. A lot of dignitaries come, past presidents have came, about 10,000 people have come to the event, a lot of work our team does. Our team is in charge of six other teams around the country that organize the event, so a lot of work gets done, they do a great job every year on doing this. So I do have a quick little two-minute video on the highlights from last year’s event that we do every year. It starts out with the families arrive Friday, we have a family day on Saturday on, on Academy grounds, and then it ends with a candlelight vigil Friday, Saturday night, and then the main event with the fire being honored is on Sunday. So all this, long of my technology works, I will pull this up hopefully. There we go, getting there. You can’t see it, huh?
Minimize that, minimize that.
What’s that? Does it go down?
Minimize. Can you get to the desktop?
If they screen, not sure.
Aaron?
Aaron, you know this, right? You’re good at this stuff.
I think he needs to use it.
He’s younger, he should.
Are we playing this?
I’m going to play it, yeah, but it’s not up on the screen.
So he’s just got a YouTube link?
There should be a YouTube video on the desktop.
Oh, it should, it’s on.
Oh, it’s on the desktop, okay. That might be the wrong one.
Hit escape.
I don’t see it, it didn’t make it.
Oh, well. That’s already on there, put it on the bottom. Yeah, it did not show up on the screen.
Technology will tell you every time, every time.
Welcome to the 2022 National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend.
Our nation recognizes your sacrifice. It is through you that
It is through you, the keeper of their memory, that they live on.
My name is Cherry Hills, my husband is Buddy Hills.
I miss him so much.
There isn't a day that doesn't go by that I'll think about him.
Some of my first thoughts in the morning, then my last thoughts in the evening.
These firefighters chose to walk a path paved with danger and uncertainty, adversity
the teams around the country do a great job in supporting the families, and the foundation
and sacrifice for the greater good.
You're better.
does great work on supporting all the families who've suffered a loss.
That was a great catch, you know why?
The last piece I have here is, so in order, in way we honor these, every year we have
Because I like the fish.
a, we have a, we have the public to show a red light on their porches, the Public Information Officer is putting something out on the paper to have red lights on your porches this week up until Sunday in honor of all the farm and no killed line of duty, so you'll have that to deprive, I think we're not yesterday, three in the car's office, read the script and what we're asking the public to do. So with that, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Chief, we just want to thank you for representing Summit, we want to thank you for taking a leadership role in the state of New Jersey in this important event in recognizing our fallen firefighters. So I know you need to go and get ready, because you're leaving out early, early in the morning.
Yes, we are.
So we thank you for this.
Chris, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, next on our agenda, we will have a presentation from Michael Malloy, who is the area representative from New Jersey American Water Company. We thank you for being here tonight.
Of course.
We've been waiting to hear from you, so the podium is yours.
No, thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak with you this evening, that's rare that I get the opportunity to talk to city councils about the important work we do, but thanks for making the time. So Mike Malloy, Senior Operations Manager, New Jersey American Water, based out of Short Hills, our service territory covers as far east as Irvington, as far west as Tewksbury, as far north as Little Falls, and we serve the entire city of Summit. So New Jersey American Water is the largest investor-owned water and wastewater utility in the state of New Jersey. Most folks are familiar with our water work, we are engaged in wastewater services as well, including a number of local communities, that's ever something that interests Summit in terms of getting out of the sewer business, that's something we're always happy to talk to you about. In terms of how we manage our assets, we're very proactive in our maintenance activities and our operations activities, so probably the most visible of those activities are hydrant flushing, blow-off flushing, and valve inspections, that's something we take upon ourselves every year, go out, flush all the hydrants, make sure they're all in good working order, every single hydrant, every single opportunity is taken to make sure those hydrants are functional. Blow-offs are dead ends of our systems, just to flush through those, make sure the water quality is fresh in those. Valve inspections, all of our larger valves are inspected every other year, and our smaller valves are inspected once every four years to make sure that they're in good working condition, that in the unfortunate event of a main break, we're able to get as small a shutdown area as possible to get those repairs completed as quickly as possible. GIS, or Geographic Information System, is something we've invested in over a number of years now, we go out and we actually geolocate all of our assets, all of our valves, hydrants, and other assets, comes in handy when valves get paved over and you're looking for them in the middle of the night, you can find them pretty easily using the equipment that we have, as well as leak detection. We have two employees who go out every single day and proactively perform leak detection on our system, they make sure that those leaks that may not necessarily be surfacing are located, so hopefully we can get after them before they turn into a larger issue. And then the fire hydrant you see on the right-hand side, you've probably seen some of those, those disc-type objects on the front of fire hydrants throughout the city, those are actually leak detection monitoring nodes, they turn on early morning and they listen to, hear acoustically whether or not there's any leaks between different hydrants. It's a tremendous system that allows us to pick up on any leaks, in addition to avoiding more pronounced main breaks, it also allows us to keep the amount of water that's wasted through the leaking system down. So making capital investments proactively is a major part of our business, as you can tell, there's been an increase in the amount of investment we're making across the state. As you can tell, there's, there's an increased amount of investment over the years, it's our approach to get after these system improvements proactively rather than reactively. And as this slide also demonstrates as well, there's our miles of pipe that have been replaced, some of those numbers include work that's been completed in the city summit as well. Hopefully this is, I should have made this a little bit darker, so it's a little bit easier to read, but this is a rundown of recent investment in the city. The map on the right-hand side, which is probably also a little bit difficult to read, is a graphic depiction of where we've replaced valves, hydrants, as well as mains within the city. Some of these are major arteries through our system, you can see 20, 24s, 12s, those are kind of larger arteries for us. Sure, we're all familiar with Morris Avenue, that's been a major project for us, very congested underground space as well. Customer service is important to us, we're available 24/7, 365 days a year, main breaks don't wait, whether it's New Year's Day or Christmas Day or whenever, we're dispatching crews in the middle of the night to handle emergencies as they come in, so if customers ever have any issues with their service, phone number's the best number to reach, there'll always be somebody on the other end of the phone there to pick up and to dispatch a crew to handle that issue. And there's also another variety of different ways that we communicate with our customers as well, we have a website where we post service alerts, there's something called a Code Red app, you can download on your phone, and if your home is located within an area that's gonna be shut down for service, if there's a main break, if there's hydrant flushing that may cause discolored water, that notification will come across on that app. We also have a customer advisory app that'll also allow you to see any kind of emergency alerts or issues in our system. And just being cognizant that some folks are comfortable calling in, and they're happy to pick up the phone and talk to somebody on the other end of the line to report an emergency or an issue, there are some folks that would rather just log on to the computer and do it on their phone, we also have a website where you can now communicate emergencies as well. And last slide is just, just kind of some information on our facility in Short Hills, where I work, we have some recent projects to increase our sustainability and some of our more environmentally conscious measures that we're taking. Reservoir One, which I hope everybody's familiar with our facility, it's across the, across the street from the Short Hills Mall there, the reservoir number one that we have actually has the largest floating solar array in the United States, ribbon cuttings next month, it's that provide about 95% of our facility's annual power. The water industry is kind of different than the power industry and the gas industry in the sense that it's very energy intensive in order to move water, you don't normally hear about water moving across state lines or large distances, so that's why it's kind of a local endeavor, but it is very, very power intensive to operate pumps and treatment stations, so this is just an effort we're making to improve our environmental footprint. So with that, welcome, any questions?
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. The company has come up a lot in, in our council meetings, and so I want to give our council an opportunity to ask any questions. Marjorie?
Thank you, Council President Protem, thank you for coming in tonight.
Of course.
My question is about, New Jersey American Water did a lot of work on Morris Avenue, and I understand, my understanding is that you will be doing the repaving, is that correct?
Yes.
And when can we expect that? There are a lot of people here waiting for that.
Yes, so there's been some recent discussion about that between the city, the police department and the county, that's scheduled for, I believe after June 22nd was the date that all those entities came up as, as the agreed-upon date, so that-
After the, after schools are out.
After the schools are out, yes.
Okay, great. And it'll be a daytime activity after schools are out?
Yes.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Of course.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President Protem, thank you for coming tonight. Where can we find an update, and maybe we can talk to Director Schreger as well regarding what, what roads you're also responsible for and the priority in which they would be paved after the work is done?
In terms of work that we've completed that hasn't necessarily been paved yet-
Correct.
I believe West End Avenue is, is another location that we're due to pave, I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Okay.
I know there's been some concerns about making sure that paving's done in a fashion where it's not impacting traffic during the day, I could get back to you at that date.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And this presentation will be uploaded to the website for public consumption, so that'll be available to us. Any other questions from council? Do I open that up to the public to ask any questions? So I'll open it up to the public, any questions from our representative from the American Water Company? Come on up.
Oh, I have to ask it again?
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Hi, I'm Suzanne Travers, I live at 8 Summit Avenue, I just, is that the water we drink across from the mall?
That is.
Oh, cool, I never knew. Can I ask a question?
Our city clerk has a question for you.
So how do you coordinate work when another utility is opening up the road and exposes work that you might have to address?
That's a good question. It depends on how far advanced we know. The city's kind enough to give us their repaving schedule in advance, and that drives a lot of the work we do, if we can get into replace service lines or valves or mains in advance of the city's paving or the county's paving, we always try to do that if, if the asset's in need of renewal. I know other utilities do work and sometimes we don't know in advance. I know there's been some work that other utilities have done, and we found out very recently, we've been able to kind of turn on a dime and get some work done in advance of their paving, but if we could know further in advance of when they're gonna work-
So when you don't know, does that constitute an emergency? Do you put out any kind of notification to the citizens that, or the neighborhoods that it might impact?
An emergency, I wouldn't necessarily say it's, it was planned, planned work, expedited planned work.
Expedited planned work, okay. Do you get, do you notify?
Yes, we do, yeah. Yep, we usually have an inspector on the site, if we're, say we're replacing a service line to someone's home, that inspector will knock on their door, leave them hanging tags, will usually try to send a postcard if they have enough time in advance.
Thank you.
We thank you for this presentation, I know, Mayor, there was a time when we were having flooding in different parts of the town, and Mayor was in touch, and we gave out a number, and I believe you have a number where residents can reach you on, on your presentation.
Correct.
And so we hope we don't have that flooding again. I see one other question from the public, please.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Deo Hui Cargill Court, I've been talking to some friends on Kent Police Boulevard, and they have been talking about the quality of the paving after you guys completed the work, it doesn't go all the way from curb to curb, it kind of leaves about a foot maybe from the curb into the actual asphalt, so they've been asking if that's gonna be fixed.
Was that, was that paving done after Mayor replacement?
I believe it was.
Okay, we certainly check all the paving out there, usually if it's, never heard of it being off a foot from the curb?
About, I mean, I haven't measured, yeah.
Yeah, usually either half width or full width, so, but we're happy to check it out, it's not a problem.
Thank you again.
Of course, thank you for your time.
All righty, so I know next up on the agenda, we're ready to move on to resolutions, and our first resolution up is from Finance, do we ask the clerk to read the-
No, that would only be an ordinance.
That's an ordinance, oh, okay.
You would just defer to the Finance Chair.
So Finance Chair, that would be Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President Protem, this is number 10368, and this resolution authorizes emergency trans, authorizes emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. The statutory language required in a resolution like this uses the word emergency, but this is a regular occurrence, not an emergency. These temporary appropriations are to help fund city operating expenses and payroll expenses until we have adopted our 2023 budget later this spring, and in fact, the 16th of May, I'm hoping is when we will be doing so. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote.
Excuse me?
Council President.
I have a question.
Perhaps you can-
Is that okay?
Open it up to comments first.
Oh, open it up to comments first, thank you. Councilmember Hamlet, you may begin.
Sure, thank you, Council President. I just had a quick question, and it, never very good at math, but on page three, the, why are the numbers different on page one and page three? Is the total 27, or is the, where's the 14,00163 coming from?
For this particular one, it's 10,000, fire.
Right, but then what's the 14, sorry, the-
Including, including this resolution, the total has been, the temporary redoption, excuse me, the temporary resolutions adopted in this year, 2023, has been a total of 14.
Okay, but then in this one, it says total's 27, so I'm just-
I think the, what we did when we set up the temporary operating budget for 2023, that was the 26.25% total amount that we could, we could go up to, I think that's what the memo was saying, and I can't speak to what Tammy put together, no, I see it, yeah, that's what, that's the amounts that we've done in resolutions, temporary emergency authorizations thus far.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ask the public.
Oh, public, do you have any questions? Now we'll get on to the roll call.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Hairston?
Aye, and this resolution passes, we'll move on to Safety and Health, and that would be ID number 10337, Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, Council President Protem, so the first Safety and Health resolution is to appoint Officer Kathleen Majuli to the position of Humane Law Officer for the remainder of the 2023 calendar year. The Humane Law Officer is responsible for animal welfare in Summit, and this is a position that is required by state law. In January, council appointed then Lieutenant Michael Tribber, who's now Captain Tribber, to this position. Since Captain Tribber's promotion, council needed to appoint a successor. We are pleased that Officer Majuli has taken on this important role, and I move this resolution.
And I second it. Is there any questions from council? Any questions from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And this resolution passes. I believe we have a resolution from Safety and Health from the floor.
Correct.
Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, this is Safety and Health, ID 10387, and this resolution authorizes the lease purchase of two Ford utility interceptor vehicles for the police department. The annual lease purchase-
Aye. And this resolution passes. We'll move on to safety and health, and that would be ID number 10337. Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, Council President Protem. So the first safety and health resolution is to appoint Officer Kathleen Majuli to the position of humane law officer for the remainder of the 2023 calendar year. The humane law officer is responsible for animal welfare in Summit, and this is a position that is required by state law. In January, council appointed then Lieutenant Michael Tribber, who's now Captain Tribber, to this position. Since Captain Tribber's promotion, council needed to appoint a successor. We are pleased that Officer Majuli has taken on this important role, and I move this resolution.
And I second it. Is there any questions from council? Any questions from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And this resolution passes. I believe we have a resolution from safety and health from the floor.
Correct.
Councilmember Fox?
Thank you. This is safety and health ID 10387, and this resolution authorizes the lease purchase of two Ford utility interceptor vehicles for the Police Department. The annual lease purchase price is $28,065.11 for the two vehicles. And so that's that that amount is paid over it's 28,000 per year for the two vehicles. And this is part of the this was being done under the state purchasing plan, and this is part of the Police Department's fleet replacement schedule. We're doing this from the floor because the availability of these vehicles is very limited, and they are available right now, and there's money in our budget. So we are we want to get this done before those leave the floor. I guess it's another supply chain thing with with vehicles. So the first year's payment is in an account funded by the 2022 budget, and the remaining two years will be paid under the subsequent year's budgets. I move this resolution.
And I second it. Any questions from council members?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm curious what level of performance the vehicle has. Is it a high level performing vehicle, meaning was the possibility of a hybrid vehicle considered? I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
I think that's a question for the chief, if you don't mind coming up.
Through you, Council President. No, it's not a hybrid. Right now, we're having a tough enough time just finding these two vehicles. So I mean, the thought of a hybrid right now, I mean, with the supply train issues, it's not even on the not even on the table right now.
Thank you, Chief.
But this is a high performance vehicle.
Probably the state of the science might not be that that type of high performance vehicle would have a hybrid option anyhow. But I was curious to ask.
Some police departments are using hybrids and and electric vehicles, but not as part of their their main fleet.
Got it. Well, I'm glad you got the vehicles. Thank you for answering.
Any other questions?
Council President Protem, thank you. I just have a follow up question to that. Would we even have the capability of charging it if we were to buy a hybrid? Does that even exist yet?
Well, no, that's that's another.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions from council, we'll open it up to the public. Any questions on this resolution? Okay, so we will have a call for a vote. Do I hear all those in favor of approving this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And this one is approved. And now we'll move on to administrative policies and community services. That would be Councilmember?
Allen.
Allen, and that's ID 10349.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I would like to introduce Resolution 1039 10349, introducing authorizing an amendment to the City of Summit's personnel policy. This resolution formalizes summer hours starting the Friday before Memorial Day each year for the City Hall administrative offices, which will close at 1:00 p.m. I ask to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any questions from council members?
Just real quick. Through you, Council President Protem. Councilwoman Allen, so can you just explain the exact changes from last year? I'm assuming it is just the dates, correct? Yeah, I would like to defer to through you, Council President. I'd like to defer to Business Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President. It's just starting. It's just memorializing something that it's the change is recognizing that Friday before Memorial Day, which is what we've it's always been, and we just noticed that that didn't wasn't reflected in our personnel policy, so we needed to make this correction.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Any questions from the public? Okay, all those in favor of approving ID 10349?
Aye.
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 Any nays? And it passes. Okay, we'll now move on to Capitol Projects and Community Services, and that would be our Councilwoman Hamlet?
Nope.
Nope?
Levine.
And she put it in front of me so I could read it and say that it was you. So forgive me, Councilwoman. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Resolution number 10333 authorizes execution of a sanitary sewer easement agreement of 15 Butler Parkway. An existing home at that site was demolished, and a new single family home is being constructed in its place right there at 15 Butler Parkway. The city's sanitary sewer main is located on the west side of that property, and no easement currently exists. As part of the grading plan approval for the project, the division required the owner to grant an easement to the city to ensure the location of this critical infrastructure is known into the future, and that protection is afforded to it. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any questions from council members?
I just have one, Council President Protem. And through you, I can ask Director Schreger. I was just wondering if this was something typical that we find out later, or is an easement just we just know that is that city property now? I just just trying to understand.
Sure. Through you, Council President Protem. Unfortunately, the city has a lot of sanitary sewer lines and storm sewers that are on private property that do not have an easement. We do have prescriptive rights to them, so obviously people, you know, can't prevent us from going on their property. So it's easier and cleaner when an easement exists. This project came in through a submission of a grading permit, and that gives us the opportunity to say, we understand you're doing work on a permit. We would like to get an easement. So because they're not able to work in it anyways, that land is, you know, out of their building envelope. But that's what happened here. It was an opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? We'll open it up to questions from the public. Okay, all those in favor of ID 10333?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And it passes. 10339?
Thank you, Council President Protem. Resolution number 10339 authorizes submission of an NJDEP Stormwater Assistance Grants Program grant application and execution of the associated grant agreement. Through the Stormwater Assistance Grants Program, the NJDEP provides funding to assist New Jersey municipalities in upgrading their MS4 stormwater programs to comply with the requirements. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So I prefer the abbreviation. The City of Summit is considered an original Tier A municipality and is eligible to apply for funding in the amount of $25,000. There's no match required for the grant program. The permitees must utilize the proposed funding to develop, update, and maintain an MS4 infrastructure map that delineates the location of specific stormwater features. As such, the Engineering Division is applying for funding in the amount of $25,000 to complete this work. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any questions from council members? I have a question. Was that what the the sewers that the American Water was just showing us the map of? And is this in regard to that?
You know, New Jersey American Water does manage some sanitary sewer systems, but this is all for storm sewer. So.
So any questions from council? Any questions from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays? And that passes. ID number 10289?
Thank you, Council President Protem. This resolution authorizes 2023 Arbor Day festivities. This year, Arbor Day will be celebrated in Summit on Saturday, May 13, 2023. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee is planning to commemorate Arbor Day at the Tiny Forest at 100 Morris Avenue, which is behind the community center, and recognize Summit's 28th year as a Tree City USA, which is a designated status. City Forester John Lindson will give a presentation to those in attendance on the history of Arbor Day in the United States. He will also talk about the importance of preserving trees in our community and the value that trees have on our everyday lives. The event would also mark the official spring opening for the Tiny Forest. There will also be a reading of an Arbor Day proclamation that day. So this is going to take place at 10:00 a.m. on May 13. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any questions from council members? Any questions from the public? I look forward to seeing the growth in the Tiny Forest. I can't wait for that. So all those in favor of ID number 10289?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last Capitol Projects?
Council President Protem, I'm actually going to recuse from this. I'm a trustee of the Reeves Reed Arboretum, so I'm recusing.
Thank you, council member. And we'll turn it over to Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President Protem. So this resolution is 10147. It authorizes the awarding of a bid for the Hobart Avenue sidewalk project. This project will install a sidewalk along the east side of Hobart Avenue from the Reeves Reed Arboretum to Hobart Road, and then it will cross over to the west side of Hobart Avenue to and continue to Ridge Road. The crosswalk will be placed at Hobart Road and will also include flashing beacons to enhance safety. This project was first proposed in 2021 and was put on hold after bids were received. The project was redesigned and has this winter and was put out to bid. A total of nine bids were received on March 7, 2023, and the lowest responsible bidder was DLS Contracting with a bid amount of $95,419. The award of the bid has been delayed a couple of times, a couple of meetings now, to allow input from residents who live on Hobart Avenue. And they there were concerns about the location of the sidewalk and the location of the crossing. The Capitol Projects Committee has made several visits to the area, and I suspect Mr. Schreger has made more visits than that to speak to residents and to look at potential crossing locations. This sidewalk has been identified as a priority under the city's sidewalk plan, and will make it possible to walk to the Arboretum and improve safety for pedestrians. I move this resolution.
I think you need to second.
And then I will second it.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so are there any questions from council members?
Thank you, Council President. I actually had a question through you, Council President, for Mr. Schreger. The could you talk about what went into considering the safety of this particular location versus an alternate location on Ridge Road, which has been proposed by a resident?
Certainly through you, Council President Protem. I will call up the map just so it's a little easier to follow along. So as as stated in the introduction, currently, a sidewalk does exist on the west side of Hobart Avenue that then turns up Ridge Road. It does not extend further north up to the Arboretum. That was the main intent of this project, which the the concept began probably three or four years ago at this point. And the current proposal has it shown on the west side up to Hobart Road, where it would cross over at an existing intersection with Hobart Road, and then continue on up to the Arboretum in an area that currently has a gravelly type sidewalk, which is not technically classified as sidewalk because it's not a hard surface. So that would be converted to concrete. Previously, we had looked at the possibility of putting the crossing at Ridge Road and then extending along the the eastern property there, which is 141 Hobart, as opposed to Seven Ridge, and then continuing up that way. What we do have, the challenge that we face there is the is the presence of trees on the, I believe it's 135 or Hobart Avenue, which we can show on the site triangles. This here shows essentially what the driver would see in that gray triangle area, and those trees are blatantly in the way, so they don't meet the required stopping site distance that a driver would need to be one alert to a pedestrian, then have reaction time, and then for the vehicle to come to a safe stop. We did look at both sides of Ridge Road, and as you can see, the site triangle does go through that tree, those trees. Actually, there's two. And on both sides of Ridge Road, there still is an obstruction there. The desire was not to remove those trees. The forester has evaluated those trees and does feel they are they are older and healthier and not need to come down. So the option was to pursue it further up to Hobart Road, where you do meet the required site distance triangles. And that's where we are today.
Thank you.
Mr. Schreger, can you also talk about, we talked also in the committee about the curvature of the road and how that affects the site, you know, the the sightlines?
Absolutely. When you are in a straightaway, obviously, you tend to have the best line of sight for both the driver and and the vehicle. But what you also have is the ability to always maintain the the clear space along the side of the road. For example, if you look at this picture here, as it goes straight, generally, that area that might obstruct view is within the city right of way. So any obstruction there, we can maintain and take care of. Versus if you are here, you could see the sightline, then just start infringing back onto private property and areas where we would have less control to keep stuff out of the clear sight. So.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Thank you. Through you, Council President Protem, I was wondering if I could ask a question to Mr. Giacobi, if that would be okay. Mr. Giacobi, I'm new to this, so I don't really understand the process. But when Councilwoman Levine recuses herself from this process, what exactly does that mean? I know she won't be voting tonight, but does that mean she has to recuse herself from the entire process or just this evening?
Well, as you heard, this this process has been going on for, I think, since 2021.
I think 2019.
2019, bids went out, failed, engineering, reengineered. So this isn't something that that Councilwoman Levine had anything to do with. It predates her being on the council. Because she she's on the Arboretum Board, which is a volunteer position, and the board or the Arboretum, this would benefit them, I recommended that she recuse herself and not participate.
Understand.
The discussion on the dais or the vote.
Understand. I guess my question is your legal definition of whether or not, is it Robert's Rules that says she has to totally recuse herself from the process, or is that our council rules? I just I'm just trying to understand.
No, it's not. So the the it's actually under New Jersey law, if a council member has a conflict, they need to recuse themselves, and that's under New Jersey law. The recusal stepping off the dais is a recommendation that I recommend, because you don't want to be sitting up on a dais and say something or appear to influence other council people on how they're going to vote.
Right, I understand that. I guess my question is, then, should we have started that process in January and not have a part of the process of talking to residents and things of that nature? Or is that totally fine? I just don't know.
Well, I think what I what what my understanding is, is this process and the and the sidewalk that was being put in designed by engineering goes back to 2019. So.
That's not my question. I'm just saying, starting in January.
I I think that the main goal is, is that any action you take is taken up here voting. That's just a council person knowing what's going on. When I was asked, I said she should recuse herself.
Okay.
Ask a question? Is this is this resolution approving the design of this sidewalk and where it's crossing? Or is the resolution approving a bid, the lowest bid?
It's approving the lowest bid. All that was already designed. It was designed, I think, in 2019. Then in 2021, when bids came in too high, you redesigned it to to get a more competitive bidding. Is that what you did, Aaron?
It was bid in 2021, and then those those bids, and it was awarded, and then it was abandoned to evaluate to make sure that the right side of the street was selected.
I reject the premise on that one.
And and that's when a survey was done to establish those site triangles, and then it did not go with the pandemic lingering. We didn't put it back out to bid till this this early this year. I think the bids were received like March 7.
This is an award. This is awarding a bid, not designing a project.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was confused. I thought I was completely under the impression that this hadn't the the plan had never been approved. And my question today was, what is the process? Have we already approved the the plans? Because are we accepting a bid? I'm just I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing.
My understanding is, is this is an award of a bid. You're awarding a bid to the company that's going to be construction constructing this sidewalk project. So when you go out to bid, the bid specifications have to delineate exactly what the bidders are bidding on. It's not you're not designing it. This I don't know when Aaron had a designer, if he designed it as the engineer, but that was you wouldn't be designing it now and awarding a bid.
Okay, so the plan was developed 2019, 2020, and had gone through various Capitol Projects Committees and the Safety Committee and was approved in concept. That is the plan that was put out for bid that the contractor had bid on. So that is, you're actually awarding a contract to construct this plan. Can you change plans in the field? Absolutely. We have, just because of field changes or other issues too. If there is a major substantial change that might impact quantities or the overall scope of the project, that could be a little different. But generally, if it's sidewalk location and quantities aren't changing that much, there is still some flexibility through change orders or just plan change process.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamlet, are you clear?
So just to clarify, so we are approving the bid and the plan, although there can be minor changes.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
I just actually have a quick question because, through you, Council President. So when administrative policies worked on HTTV, so David and I were on the committee together, I couldn't be a part of the discussions about HTTV when they discussed the budget because I was on the board. So I guess I just want to clarify. Are we asking, this ran through CAP. Are you saying, are you asking the question? Because I guess, did Jamie work on, did Councilwoman Hamlet work on this resolution in CAP? Is that what, I just wanted clarification.
I truly just, I don't understand the process, Councilwoman Allen. So I was just trying to understand whether or not it was appropriate for Councilwoman Levine to be a part of the process, which it very well may be, but I was just trying to understand. Actually, a resident asked me that question today, and I just didn't know the answer.
Okay, so I guess through you, Council President, could Councilwoman Levine work on this resolution?
Yes, our attorney just gave us the opinion.
My opinion is that she, because of her involvement with Arboretum, she needs to recuse herself. My further opinion is that, I don't know what extent she was involved in CAPs. My understanding is that all this concept, putting the sidewalk in, all that predates her time. Whether she was just doing some exploration, my advice is that she should not vote on this evening's bid award so that there's no question about, she's not involved in it, the actual word of this contract.
Okay, one more question? And then if we approve this tonight, then I just want to, I think I heard that we could make some changes if needed. I don't know what kind of changes we would need to make if we're approving a bid and a plan tonight. What would be an example of a change that we could do if needed? Through you, Council President.
Through you, Council President, the location of the sidewalk, if it extends a little further one way or the other way, or even if it did flip sides, is stuff that would be within the realm of changes. You're not changing quantities substantially. Because you have to watch, there's a lot of bidding laws that you have to be aware of to make sure you haven't changed the scope so much that other bidders could say, if we knew you were going to switch from concrete to sidewalk made of gold, we would have bid differently. So that's what you have to watch for. So if your quantities are not changing and there's just some scope change, you can proceed with that.
Thank you. Actually, I do have one follow-up question. That's relative to the curve. You showed, can I see the other slide?
Certainly.
Director Schrager, I'm sorry. So if the crosswalk was at Ridge, how close is that? I see the road bends. If you were to put a crosswalk on Ridge versus Hobart, it feels like, when I look at that picture, the crosswalk would be really close to the bend in the road. Is that correct, on Ridge Road?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And is there a certain standard how far a crosswalk has to be away from a bend?
No, there's no standard because it may happen, and you may have to do it. It's just always becomes, are you putting in a crosswalk that is safe in terms of both visibility for the drivers and the pedestrians? So if you have an incredibly sharp curve, they can't see around that, and you have no control. Say it was a forest there, you'd have to either clear the forest or maintain it, if it's even your property to do so.
Okay, okay. And do we know the speed on that road?
25.
25, okay.
It's actually 30.
Is it 30?
Oh, 30. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem.
Okay, so if.
Through you, Council President, is it 25 near the Arboretum? Or is it?
No, it's posted 30. I can't speak to, I'm not sure if at the Arboretum, where there's the curve there, there might be advisory plates. I don't know.
Sure. So just to, I guess, educate the public on sort of my position. I've spent the last 11 years literally right at that corner, pretty much, other than last year and a half. So this is a passionate project for me, knowing that my kids have always, in fact, whenever they had to cross Hobart, I said, go down to Whitridge because the cars fly down Hobart, which is a whole different topic. And it's super concerning. And to hear that the speed is 30 is even more concerning. I actually spent time with Ms. Monica Richter. The other day, we walked all around this a few times. And then we also walked the entire Arboretum path. And then I also reached out to, I think, just about every resident that's within 200 yards. If I missed you, I apologize. But Director Schrager, would you mind zooming out and showing on Google Earth the entire portion that includes the Arboretum? Because when I was looking at it today, and I've been struggling with this, I've looked at it from every different angle. I spent time with Mary today in her driveway. And from Seven Ridge, the perspective there is people are going to cross at Ridge, no matter what you do. It's sort of like the high school kids who cross at Butler, no matter what you do, and there's no crosswalk. They're going to keep crossing at the Phantom Crosswalk on Morrison Butler. So I went back tonight at 4:30. And I was wondering if your survey looked at the straightaway from right in front of the Arboretum. It's so much longer than the other straightaway. And I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration? Can you, I don't know if it's not the right.
Yeah, it's, so essentially looking to the north from Hobart Road?
Yeah, can you zoom into that or no? I don't mean to ask you, put you on the spot, but I can do it if. Right, so where's the Arboretum?
Arboretum, the first entrance is, well, it's only one, but right here is their driveway.
So that's Arboretum driveway?
Correct, yes.
Okay, do you mind just zooming out a little bit? Because if you took, if you look at that straightaway, I actually, I drove my car around this 10 times today. And I thought to myself, you know, I think the crosswalk is better at Hobart because of the sightlines. But then I ran back around again, and I started at the McCann's, a little bit, I started at Trish Murphy's house. So I forget what she's at. I started at Trish Murphy's house. And I started going to the Ridge area. And I thought to myself, oh, my gosh, the straightaway from Ridge to Hobart is so short. I know I'm not an engineer, but it's so short that my thought was, my gosh, I don't know if I'd let my kids cross there. So then I went, that's why I looked at that other straightaway. Because I believe that there should be sidewalks from the Arboretum, so just so that everybody knows. But I am super concerned about the speeds on this road, and I'm just trying to find a way to make this work. The other thing I will say in doing all of this research, in front of the McCann's house today, there was two landscaping trucks that made it borderline impossible for cars to pass. In fact, I was, I sat there and I almost called Rita McDaniel or Chief Zagorski because it was so hard to get around that. So I don't know if we do this, then I think maybe we should put some no parking signs there because it was eye-opening to me, how fast and how dangerous that road is. So I just, and I also just wanted to learn more about if, and I'll stop after this, but are there speed studies for crosswalks that are required?
So through you, Council President, they should be considered because if you have a high speed, and there's certain speeds, posted speeds that you're not recommended to put in crosswalks, it's 40 and higher. So we do still meet it. There has been speed studies where the 85th percentile speed was about 34.9, if I recall, in this area, which is above the 30, but it's not overly above it. So there have been some studies. We can look at traffic calming independent of this project. I know it's come up that there's only one, at least that I recall, one speed limit sign that's kind of almost embedded in those two trees. So regardless of this project, that's something we're looking at now just to add signage to, bring in awareness to slow people down the best we can.
But that runway was not considered in the survey, correct?
The runway.
The runway, if you're coming out of the Arboretum, the runway to the left, it's about, it's right in front of, it's, I forget what house number it is. It's pretty lengthy, though.
So over by, well, there's the one house, which is 155, that has a straightaway to the Arboretum. Going to the north, generally from whatever intersection you're at, you have a clear line of sight, so we know we are meeting it, whether you have a crosswalk at Ridge or at Hobart Road. Because it's a straightaway, you do have a clear line of sight, so.
So thank you. These are the questions that I think are going around, but I think you got your question answered about the sidewalk. This is a project for awarding a bid for the sidewalk project. You got your questions answered?
Yes.
So now we want to open it to the public. And if there are any questions, come on up. Mary Seeger.
I apologize for the inconvenience.
No apology necessary at all. We're happy to see you.
My name is Mary Seegers Travers, T-R-A-V-E-R-S. And I and my family have lived here in Summit at Seven Ridge Road since 1979. So we have observed and experienced and lived in the neighborhood where all the planning has been going on. And, you know, I'm going to try to summarize what I and my family members have done and what we think should happen next. So first of all, I'm not aware of the first two years of the history of this project from 1919, I mean, 2019, 2020. I didn't hear anything about this. In June of 2021, I received a notice with a blueprint and if I had any questions for the city engineer to talk to him. I did meet with the city engineer Matthias in August of 2021 and spent an hour seeing if I could just sort of understand the blueprint. After a misunderstanding within the Capitol Projects Committee regarding the design and the location became apparent, then my impression was, oh, good, okay, is that better? Okay. My impression was that the project was shelved for two years because I didn't hear anything until January 17 of this year. So there were almost two years then when nothing was happening. I broke my leg in December, and so for the first five weeks, I was in the hospital. And it was only then, at the beginning of February, that I could begin to turn my attention to this new project. But it seemed like a new old. It did not seem that there were any changes in it. And so I took that as the project that I should address. We have met with at least five council members, I think, in the last two weeks, and of course, Mr. Schrager, too. And it did appear that new ideas were emerging about where to safely and lawfully place the crosswalks. Two choices that were there were Hobart Road, which was recently converted from a two-way to a one-way street. And so that was proposed. And the other thing that was considered was, or was not considered, I think we kind of wanted it considered, was Ridge Road itself. So let me just make sure I'm summarizing this as best I can here. I want to make it clear that as neighbors of the Arboretum, we appreciate its community benefit, and we support the city's efforts to create the safest possible sidewalk access. Where we differ from the current plan is that we do not feel that the Hobart Road intersection is as safe as Ridge Road. Part of the difficulty there is the curvature in the road. And there's not much that we can do about that. You can't alter Mother Nature, at least not in that situation. We think that if you remove the two trees that were at the beginning of Mr. Schrager's description there, that remedies the problem of any kind of visual obstacles at the Ridge Road crossing. Ridge Road crossing also has certain advantages. It is a two-way street. Ridge Road itself is two blocks. It connects Summit Avenue with Hobart Avenue. And as you, those two ways are used fairly frequently. People, I like to say that Ridge, in a sense, is a shortcut so that people can get to 78 on the highways a little faster. But that, of course, raises the problem of speed. So the Mother Nature being the way she is, the unchanging curvature of the roadway is rather fundamental. That is not going away. It will continue to define how most pedestrians cross the street. Our experience, 44 years of living in that area, in that house, is that invariably, they start at Ridge Road and then begin to slowly jaywalk as they try to get over to the other side. The advantage that Ridge has, it's got a streetlight, a pretty bright streetlight. Hobart Road does not. The, both of those pathways have full stop signs. And then wherever you put this flashing yellow beacon light, it can go, it will hopefully light up the Hobart Road crossing, but it will be a great assist also in the Ridge Road crossing. So I think to meaningfully improve public safety, and that is our primary goal, the visible protections of a crosswalk should be located where pedestrians actually tend to cross. And so I'm a little disappointed that there has been, to my knowledge, no study of the pedestrian patterns of activity there. It seems to me we should put that, we should put this crosswalk where the most pedestrians cross. And so that would be my first thing. It's that, no, do not approve the bid now. Work with a little more time to, first of all, we need a study of the pedestrian traffic, movements of pedestrians across Hobart Avenue, where do they go? That would be very valuable. Secondly, I was not aware of any changes in the blueprint that I got two years ago and the one that I got in February of this year at all. I went over it carefully, didn't detect any changes. We could develop an alternative plan, looking at, one looking at Hobart Road, maybe, as the crosswalk, the other one looking at Ridge. Just begin to compare these two plans in terms of primarily safety, sightlines, and cost. The cost of the current council is $95,419. When I looked at the lowest bid that came in and added up the things that were, steps that were taken only with regard to Seven Ridge Road, it was an expenditure of $23,000. And you wouldn't have that at some of the other areas that might be candidates. So I would. So it would save money as well.
Thank you.
But our primary concern is the safety of people. And so I would ask you, then, to, you know, give some attention to not approving the bid tonight, taking two more weeks, or whatever it is, to consider some of these things and just giving it one really very serious, hard, long look before going through the. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Fox, I think I want to ask you first. And then I want to ask Director Schreger. Because I think there was a comparison between starting out with it, the crosswalk being at Seven Ridge, and then the decision was to go to Hobart.
I don't know that there was, we looked at both and we talked about both. And what Mr. Schreger represented to us was that with or without the trees, that it was the safest choice was Hobart. And, you know, I know that there may be a habit right now of people on Ridge, but I think, you know, where you put the crosswalk with the beacons is where most people will cross. It's not a situation where it takes people out of their way.
Gotcha.
So I think, you know, but I would defer to Mr. Schreger to answer if there's something I've missed.
I would, too. So we'll hear from you. We'll hear from Director Schreger first. Thank you.
Yeah, so when the project began in concept, and again, this was a project identified in the Sidewalk Installation and Maintenance Guidelines, we, through preliminary investigation, we knew the trees would be an issue with the sight distance. So there was no formal plan prepared on that side because the removal of the trees was not desired by the caps committees at the time. So that takes care of that. Is there some cost, because it's on the opposite side, that might not be on the other side? There is some. I can't speak to what specifically the change would be. There is some, like, the fire hydrant does have to move on the side. It's on, but if it was on the opposite side, those are large trees. So you would be adding, you know, several thousand, if not four or 5,000 for a tree removal for each. So there is some gain and loss on both sides, but yes.
What I wanted to confirm, there was an evaluation of the benefit of doing it at Ridge Road versus Hobart. That evaluation took place.
Yes.
Not the pedestrian one, because I'm not aware that that's a requirement within your guidelines. But there was an evaluation about Ridge.
Yes, and the primary issue is the sight distance for safety.
That for safety purposes, Hobart was more favorable. Okay. Rosemary, did you?
Rosemary Grace. I can speak as a pedestrian because I frequently walk to the Arboretum. I don't, I never drive. And I walk along Hobart on the sidewalk side, and then I cross Ridge. And I walk on the grass of Mrs. Seegers Travers' property. And then I cross over it because I feel it's safer there, which is exactly the plan that Mr. Schreger is presenting for your approval. And I feel it's safer because I can see. That's the best place that I can see. And I'm also a lover of trees, so I would not like to see those mature trees removed just for a sidewalk. The beacon, I think, will be absolutely necessary. The reason is because people do speed on that street. In fact, the police department had placed one of those large electronic signs, you know, the flashers telling you what your speed is. So one day I was there when there was a lot of traffic coming, and I couldn't cross. I had to wait a long time. But I stood and I watched the SUVs and all. Every single one of them was above the speed limit. Not a single one even bothered to slow down when they saw that they were above the speed limit. So having the beacon at that point, you know, further along the sidewalk going on and then crossing there, I feel, would be the safest and most prudent passage for pedestrians. And incidentally, I informally have been asking why we don't have a sidewalk for years. And I think maybe Mayor Rades remembers I started bugging her, I think shortly after she was first elected. So this has been, and I'm sure there are other people also. I mean, this will be a wonderful thing for people to come, you know, from Springfield Avenue, you know, people visiting the city. I mean, the Arboretum is the crown jewel of the city. So I would, I endorse your going ahead with this. I don't think that needs to be further delayed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Other comments? Thank you.
So we're Jack and Joanne Paris. We live at Hobart Avenue and at Ridge Road, right on the Hobart Avenue side of the road. I would just make a couple of observations. We've been there for almost 15 years. We ourselves do not cross at that intersection for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's actually simple geometry. The apex of the curve is on the west side. So your sight lines are undoubtedly better on the west side of the road. It's just, it's just geometry. I mean, you just, you have the longest viewpoint on the west side of the road. So that's, it's just basic, it's just basic geometry. The other thing is, there's two pretty active driveways, ours and our neighbor's, the McCann's. So there's cars backing up and pulling out of those driveways exactly at that point where you want to put a crosswalk. Furthermore, Ridge Road, it's a pretty steep road downward. Putting a crosswalk there, I think, is actually very dangerous. There's been incidents in the recent past that during the winter, trucks went down that icy, steep path right through Hobart Avenue, over our Belgium block and into our front yard.
Up the hill.
Up, so, I mean, this is where, you know, this is where the alternative crosswalk is being put. We had to get, like, the Belgium block replaced there. So, I mean, we're supportive, we're very supportive of having a sidewalk put in to get to Hobart Avenue, to the Arboretum, rather. Makes perfect sense, people use it. But I think that's a dangerous point. And just to address Delia's point, I think part of the reason why people cross there and not at other places is because the sidewalk doesn't extend beyond Ridge Road. So if there was actually a sidewalk that went across, people would probably use the sidewalk that went across and then cross at a more safe point. So I think those are, you know, again, we ourselves don't cross there. I walk on my neighbor's lawn and I go down the road and I hop across because I can see, have clear sightlines. I just think it's a very dangerous spot.
Thank you.
Joanne, is there anything else to add?
Well, some of it's repetitive, I just want to say, about the landscape trucks as well as the delivery trucks that stop, sorry, close to my neighbor's, the McCann's. You know, when someone's coming from town towards 24 and they're going around the bend, going around those trucks, first of all, they're speeding. They're not seeing until the last second that I'm trying to cross there. So it is very dangerous. Again, in the spring, a truck went down the hill, went all the way up to my hill where my front door is. And I'm known as having the house on the hill. So for them to jump the curve, again, go up the hill, up to the bushes where my front door is, that was a very frightening experience for my family. And I should point out that that happened around 3 o'clock, 3:15 PM, which is school dismissal. It is scary. Kids cannot walk there and, sorry.
Sorry, one other point that just came to mind. In addition to those two big trees, which, you know, you know, I do think it would be tragic to take them down, there is other shrubbery between our houses, the McCann's and the Paris homes that also block the sight lines. So then the other question is, how much do you need to take down? Do you take down the trees? Do you take down all the shrubs that are in between? Where does this stop? So anyways, those are our points.
So we're not taking down the trees. We're not taking down the trees. Right, okay. I think this gentleman was next.
Evening, sir. I'm Jean-Paul Travers, Seven Ridge Road, T-R-A-V-E-R-S. I'm glad the question of geometry has come up. I'm just going to try to bring up that previous overhead view in Google Earth. I mean, so much to say about this, right? Excuse me. All right. The elements, basically theme for tonight, the City of Summit can do a lot better than the existing plan. I have no criticism of the existing plan. It's lawful. Just as a point of clarity, the plan that is published on the city's website is dated June 1st, 2021. And so it comes as a surprise to me to hear that it was redesigned in any way over the winter. I don't think that was a meaningful redesign. And I'd also point out that the current plan is not, does not, omits certain aspects of the landscape. So the City of Summit, it's a fine plan, but we can do better. And here's how we can do better. Let's go back to the sightlines, the apex of the curve. This is the defining feature of the landscape. We all, I think, agree on that. It's a little counterintuitive. The reason that pedestrians cross, tend, overwhelmingly tend to cross from the northwest corner, they begin their crossing at the northwest corner of Ridge and Hobart, do a little bit of jaywalking to the north, but for the most part, they're going across Hobart. That's the overwhelming pattern. I'm not saying that other, you know, vectors don't happen, but that is the pattern. There seems to be some disagreement or contrasting opinion about that tonight. So clearly, what the city should do is pursue, you know, a thorough study of pedestrian movements through the area, aggregated pedestrian movements. I'm not an expert in that. You know, proponents of this plan, by the way, you know, have talked about how it's important that we, you know, defer to the experts. And that's, that's good, we should do that. But unfortunately, the council does not have before it tonight, you know, an expert plan of, study of, as I say, aggregated pedestrian movements through these space. And by the space, I'm talking about the entire space affected by this plan. You know, from, you know, south of Ridge Road to north of Hobart Road. That would be the space that should be studied. All right, now back to the fundamental thing about the curvature of the road. The reason that people cross there is because from there, even though the road is curving at the apex of the curve there, to the north, we talk about mutual vision and visibility.
Mr. Travers?
Can you zoom in a little bit?
Yeah, sure, sure. I want to, I want to zoom out later, though. Because it's really, you got to see the 200-yard, unobstructed, straight sightlines to the north and to the south from the apex of the curve at Ridge Road. And it does not matter whether the person is on the western side of Ridge Road or, excuse me, the western side of Hobart Avenue or the eastern side of Hobart Avenue. The sightlines are great, assuming the two trees in question are removed. And they do need to be removed to open the door to these outstanding sightlines. So again, you know, the current plan is lawful, but we can do about three times better. We can do 300% better in sightlines. Let's jump to the Hobart Road intersection for a moment. And I just want to point out that when Mr. Schreger was talking about it, he described that as an existing intersection while we were looking at a visual aid that included a crosswalk. There is actually not an existing crosswalk there. Of course, these are all existing intersections. All right. A person crossing at Hobart Road has fantastic sightlines to the north, no doubt. Their sightline to the south, the distance from Hobart Road down to Ridge Road is approximately 127 feet. Let's call it 150 feet, just to avoid misunderstandings. So that person, looking south at a northbound car that's coming towards them, their view of the roadway, the Hobart Avenue roadway, begins to be degraded as the, as they, as their eye line, you know, as the roadway shifts out of the, of their view because of the curve there. So they have about 150 feet of mutual driver, northbound driver, and a crossing pedestrian at Hobart Road have approximately 150 feet of mutual vision of each other and visibility by each other. And that's, you know, that's, that's within acceptable lawful minimums, the compliance, the city's obligation, you know, compliance obligations are satisfied on that. So, you know, it's lawful, right? However, by contrast.
Travis, I will need you to get to the point because we're...
The point is, the city can do better. The elements of the plan that my family and I have been writing to you about offer how the city can do better. And I will, and it's basically about putting the crosswalk at Ridge Road instead of Hobart Road. A person crossing at Ridge Road has straight line sightlines to the north and south of over 200 yards. So that's 600 feet of unobstructed sightlines versus 150 feet of, 600 feet in both directions, north and south from Ridge Road versus 150 feet from Hobart Road to the south.
Thank you.
Right?
Are you concluding?
I'd like to make a complete statement. Thank you. I'd like to do that. And I'm aware that there's a time limit.
Yes, and you've surpassed it, so I'm going to ask you to get to your conclusion now, please.
Okay. Why settle for the minimum legal standards? Why settle for, you know, on the, on the conflict of interest? Why settle, you know, for the honorable city solicitor, you know, to recuse herself just, just for the vote? There should have been a recusal, at least from February 11th, when the counselor is on record saying that, as a counselor, this was important to her. You know, listen, here's what it takes. Here's what it takes for Summit to deliver its best to the people, okay? It takes a little bit of patience on the part of the proponents of this plan to get that pedestrian traffic study. This thing is going to get built. The Arboretum is going to get what it wants. It takes, so it takes patience on the part of the supporters of this plan. And it takes the insistence on the part of the rest of you voting here tonight to say, let's wait, let's do it right, let's have a good process here, let's have the professional advice that supporters of the plan call for, and let's have that aggravated traffic study.
Thank you.
Excuse me, aggravated traffic study.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Council members, do you need any additional information?
We've got another.
Oh, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Dan Gregory. I live at 155 Hobart Avenue.
Thank you.
The person most affected by this, I would point out, has there been any consideration to enlarge parking on the Arboretum property? I think the challenge we have is the sheer volume of parkers, people who come to the Arboretum and park on the street. And that's where I think the danger really occurs. You have all these young families coming, they're parking, they're getting out of their car, and they're not going to walk away from the Arboretum to cross the street. They're just going to jaywalk across. And that, I think, is where the danger of this sidewalk really is because it's luring attendees across the very busy street wherever they want to cross, as opposed to walking south and crossing at the proposed crosswalk. They're just going to cross where they park. And I witness this on a daily basis. So my question is, has the Arboretum been asked to expand on property parking? It's my understanding it's a 14-acre site. And I kind, I'm a big fan of the Arboretum, big supporter. But we haven't, we, Beacon Hill Club requires that their guests park on their property. Why can't we require that the guests of the Arboretum park on the Arboretum grounds and limit the amount of traffic and congestion at a very dangerous roadway as we all talked about already? So my question to the mayor and the council is, have we asked the Arboretum, can they expand their parking spaces on the, I don't know if I can do a question and answer, but...
No, so, thank you. I think we can, I think Councilwoman Fox would like to answer that question.
Well, I think that there are a number of options that we can explore. One of them is, by putting a sidewalk here, it means that there are people who can walk from town. They can park in town. You know, for example, on a weekend, the Tier Garage is free. They could park there and walk down. You know, people from, people who go to the Arboretum are people who like to walk and spend time outdoors and perhaps aren't doing it particularly if they have strollers or things like that.
So where are all those cars coming from?
Well, no, but they're not doing it because it's not easy to drive, to walk there now because there isn't a sidewalk.
That's a stretch.
No, I really do think, would you let me finish what I was going to say? I think we ought to be encouraging walking. I think we ought to explore whether there is a way to make the parking arrangement that they have now more efficient. There might, you know, and Councilmember Hamlet has raised that idea. I also think we maybe want to look at, for some of the larger events, should they have busing off to parking off-site? I think there are a number of ways this could be addressed. But nonetheless, I think this is still a priority... But nonetheless, I think this is still a priority to get, to, you know, to provide the ability to walk to the arboretum and to cross safely.
Sure. So we, we're spending $95,000, why don't we give that to the arboretum and have them park off-site? We've had, our arboretum says they have 100,000 visitors a year. They're not Summit residents, all of them. And I'll, that's what the arboretum said. They have 7,000 students who come each year. Those are not all Summit students. So I think if we just step back a little bit and say, hey, they have 14 acres, the challenge is safety on Hobart Avenue. That's the challenge. And that, where it becomes dangerous, wherever the crosswalk is, is when you have events. Furthermore, the arboretum hosts weddings, and they serve alcohol. And people leave that wedding, or that, that party, and then they walk across Hobart Avenue. Now, the Beacon Hill Club requires, is required to have onsite parking to accommodate the number of guests they have when they have events. It's code. Why isn't the arboretum asked to do the same thing?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Right. I have one more question. When we met, did we meet at our house?
No, I have not met with you, it was Mattias or Sam, I guess.
An official I did meet with, he had mentioned that this plan would also allow for moving a telephone pole. Is that a part of this plan?
Uh, no, we believe we can avoid them with the layout, so yes.
So you're not going to move a telephone pole?
We believe, once we stake it out, we'll be able to avoid moving it, yes.
Okay, so are you familiar with my home?
Um, yes.
Okay, so I have a telephone pole right to the right of my driveway apron when I exit? And the proposal is to bend the sidewalk around that pole?
Yes.
So it's going to bring it closer to my driveway when I exit?
Correct, yes.
So that's a very dangerous plan. Because when I pull out, I can't see, I've got little kids racing back and forth, and you guys want to change the gravel pathway to concrete, which means the kids on the bikes are going to go faster, the strollers are going to go faster, and it's going to be dangerous.
No, I, if I could, I, I just need to better understand, both Rick and Sam have reported back that you requested the sidewalk to be there, so you, I'm just a little confused myself.
I requested the telephone pole be moved so that the sidewalk wouldn't bend closer to my exit when I'm leaving my driveway. This plan needs to be considered more. We have to ask the arboretum to do their share in limiting, in increasing the off-street parking. And they kind of want it both ways. They want to be a public park, and they want to host private events. And I don't think they should have it both ways. I think they should be asked to adhere to the rules that a Beacon Hill Club would be asked to adhere to.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Dave McCann. I live at 135 Hobart. First, just to be on the record, when I moved in over 20 years ago to Hobart Avenue, one of the neighbors introduced himself down the street, and he said, welcome to Hobart Highway. People go so fast on that road, I just want to be on record saying, the top priority for safety on Hobart should be lowering the speed limit to 25 miles an hour on the stretch from 24 to Witchridge, where it's 30. You know, for safety and to lower the speed of anyone coming into our town, you know, not to have 30 miles an hour on their mind. Second, I'm somewhat unbiased on the sidewalk because unlike the neighbors' catty corner across the street from me, and the parrises next to me, I will not have a sidewalk in my front yard regardless. But what I can tell you is the bottom of Ridge between our driveways, my driveway and the parrises, is the most dangerous spot on Hobart Avenue between Witchridge and 24. If you put a crosswalk there, somebody will die. A child will die, someone will die. Cars come around that bend so fast, trees, no trees, there's a bend, people talk about delivery trucks, lawn care trucks. There is no visibility. I don't know what visibility these folks are talking about. Come sit in my driveway. Sit in my driveway for an afternoon, and I welcome, invite all of you to do that. It is the most dangerous turn on Hobart Avenue.
So if I, I want to make sure I'm understanding your comments correctly, that putting this sidewalk project for Hobart Avenue is the, you're, you're in favor of that?
Road, Hobart Road.
Excuse me, it says Hobart Avenue here, but it's...
Hobart Avenue crossing Hobart Road.
Okay.
Yes.
And the, and the, okay, thank you.
Between the two, two options laid out, the Hobart Road intersection makes all sense in the world. Ridge is the most dangerous example of, you know, threat to public safety I've seen in a long time.
Thank you.
Council President, may I make a comment? May I make a comment? Mr. McCann, real quick, the one thing I wanted to mention, and I completely understand what you're saying, and that's what I was trying to articulate earlier, is that is one of the most dangerous intersections. We all live there. And my concern is, even past that intersection, if you get out your tape measure, there's not a lot of, and I, I sort of think maybe the Hobart would be the better option, but if these, these cars are flying around that corner, and I am so concerned that Hobart may not be the answer either, Hobart Road, and that's why I think we should look at, we should look at the straightaway here.
I mean, I, I said of those two options, I think probably the most sensible option would be, you're saying to move it up to Beacon Road?
Up, yeah, almost, almost right before Beacon, like 10...
Or up closer to the arboretum.
Right. I don't know if that's possible, but there, there's so much straightaway there. You can just see it. I, I sat there, it's got to be, I don't know, I just think we should relook at that area to your point.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would alleviate also, I mean, there's a lot of people that park on Beacon Road, they park on Hobart Avenue, north of the arboretum. And all those folks, they're not going to walk down to Hobart Road, and then walk back to the arboretum.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I, I saw Director Schreger looking like he wanted to make a remark, and so thank you, and thank you, Councilman Hamlet.
Yes, if I could through you, Council President Pro Temp, and just responding to Councilmember Hamlet's, now, I better understand what you were saying earlier. So what you're suggesting is actually a mid-block crossing, because it wouldn't be at a, an intersection, which does come with some more challenges that we did look at, but mid-blocks definitely are more difficult to install. Going back to that, just, just to understand a little bit, by the Uniform Vehicle Code, which I believe is out of Federal Highway, they basically define that a legal crosswalk exists at every public intersection. So essentially, even unmarked intersections do have crosswalks, and pedestrians are afforded the right. The question becomes, when do you stripe them? And that's when the MUTCD kicks in and dictates how and when you should stripe them, because you should not stripe all of them indefinitely. There's, there's some blatant requirements of 50 mile an hour roads, but others become sight distance, need, so that, that's how those work with the intersections.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilwoman Fox?
Um, yeah, I just had a question through you to Director Schreger. Would it be possible to consider a reduction in the speed limit to 25 as part of this project?
Yes, through you, Council President. I think regardless of the outcome of this project, what, what we hear, because we are listening and will reconvene with police, there seems to be a, a parking concern, whether it's restrictions, there seems to be a speed limit, and a general traffic calming. We have done one speed study in the last three months that, that did show close to 35, 85th percentile speed. But, but I think we'll move on those fronts regardless, and signage, I'm not sure if I mentioned that. We'll look at that independent, because it sounds like that should be done regardless. So we, we do hear that, and we'll bring that back to both caps and safety.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the public? Sure.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Travers, 8 Summit Avenue. I grew up at Seven Ridge Road and at the corner of Hobart and Ridge. I love the arboretum. I support the efforts to make it more accessible and to make Summit safer and more walkable. I have a child who rides her bike to Summit High School, and I also drive down Hobart Avenue daily multiple times, past my mom's house and the arboretum, because I'm taking my younger kid to school in Short Hills. So I'm very familiar with traffic patterns, and I, I, you know, I'm listening just as you are, and I have a totally different experience of the intersection of Ridge Road. So I'm just, you know, want to say what that is, which is that in my experience, at Ridge Road, because there's a curve, traffic naturally slows down there, that people are slowing down to turn up Ridge, there's cars that are coming down, and so that the curve actually forces drivers to slow down. And because of the curve, pedestrians can see traffic coming in both directions. And so our experience, which is borne out by foot, like the, the paths that are worn, and yes, people do walk on the, you know, Ridge and my mother's side of that street, and the other side of the street, but I think that our experience is that, over the years and, and currently, the vast majority of people are crossing at Ridge Road. They are crossing, and then they are walking down on, I believe it's 144, and then crossing Hobart Road to get onto the rest of the walkway. And I, I think it's fair to say that people have been voting literally with their feet for years at this intersection about where they feel safest to cross. And so I think the city needs to develop a plan that works with how people actually use the street, and not with how you hope they will. Putting a crosswalk where you would like people to walk does not mean that people will actually walk there. And one of the reasons, and I brought this up with some of you, and, and I want to say that, this is a side note, that, this is the first time I've ever spoken at a council meeting, but I, in a former life, was a newspaper reporter, and I have attended many of them. I know how much hard work and time that you put in, I appreciate all your service. And actually, I just want to take one second to, because this is the first time I've ever spoken at a council meeting, to say that I appreciate, you know, the, the right that we have to engage freely with our government officials. So that's, side note that I should have said at the beginning, but, but anyway, but this is something that is, a, a deep concern of mine is pedestrian safety. It's really not about what side of the street the sidewalk is on, it is about where is the safest place for people to cross. We all, I think, are in agreement about that. And one of the reasons that I am extremely concerned about it is because it was my friend, and Mike Gardner, his name was Guillermo Reyes, and he was hit on Summit Avenue last September in front of Epoletos Funeral Home, and died a month later of his injuries. And for the record, because I think there's, in conversations, I'm realizing that, you know, we don't have an active local press that well-covered this issue, there's some confusion about what happened, but he was crossing, not in a crosswalk, on Summit Avenue in exactly the same place and the same path that Summit Police Officers often walk when they're attending an event at Epoletos. They park on the side of the street, it's my house, so they park in front of my house, and they walk right there to Epoletos. And that's because on Summit Avenue, the available crosswalks are like all the way down on Morris, all the way down on Broad Street, and at Walnut Street, on the far side of Walnut Street. And they're out of the way of people's desired destinations. And I heard you refer to this earlier, I think that, so I think you all know about it, but urban planners and also my daughter informed me tonight that these routes are called desire paths, and they should be taken into account in city planning. And in the case of Hobart Avenue, I would contend, and I think that a traffic study would, or a pedestrian traffic study would support the conclusion, that pedestrians have worn a path where they feel safest to cross, and that is at Ridge Road. So I would just, in addition to the sightlines that you of course have to consider, you know, urge you to factor human behavior into your calculations. Concluding, I hope that the council works to make any crossing of Hobart Avenue a safe one for the whole community for a long time to come. And to me, that includes not only the flashing beacon, but orange safety flags for pedestrians across the street. My experience is just that they are also a visual cue for drivers. And I contend, and, and you know that we contend, that the safest crossing would be at Ridge Road, and I ask you to consider all of the safety concerns that people have raised tonight when you vote on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, Council, I mean, excuse me, Director Schreger, I would like to hear you address the pedestrian safety study that continues to come up, because I know, I remember that desired path, and I don't think, I want to hear how that relates to safety and the municipal guidelines that you are required when evaluating this. So can you speak to that?
Yes, and I'm not overly familiar with that, as I'm not an urban planner, but the general context is, is that, you know, humans will, which are becoming increasingly more unpredictable lately, that, that humans are essentially walking where they most desire. And, and in this instance, there, there has been some reports of people crossing at, at Ridge, you've seen it. You've seen people crossing, jaywalking illegally all up and down Hobart Avenue, or, or anywhere, really. The city, if desires to install a crosswalk, has to pick the, the area that is the safest for pedestrians, even if it's not where they're crossing. A good example would be Summit Avenue coming out of the Broad Street Garage. I mean, clearly, about 10, 15 years ago, people were just running across there. That was not an area to put a crosswalk, and unfortunately, someone was, was, a pedestrian was killed there, which ultimately resulted in an offense being erected. So the desired path there was not necessarily the best path, and clearly, unfortunately, it took someone's life. So it's a similar situation here, where just because they're working there does not, walking there, sorry, or crossing there, does not mean it is the safest path, and, and the city has to identify which one is, and with the site obstructions, it would be over at Hobart Road.
So, thank you for that, and I, I guess I, I mixed you up in terms of not the, not the desired path. I was interested in the pedestrian study. I haven't ever heard you talk about a pedestrian study.
Yes, we, we have not done a, a formal pedestrian count at this intersection. The numbers vary throughout weather, if you have an arboretum event. So it, it's not something like traffic where you can get an average, you know, a, a daily traffic load, just based on routine. It does spike up and down, it spikes with school. So, so...
When do you conduct those?
Generally, it would be, we have not, we've done them downtown, just to get pedestrian movements, where you have a, a very high volume of, of continuous pedestrians. Typically, they're done, we, we don't have the equipment, now you would hire someone who has the camera setup, who could just watch an intersection for extended periods of time. We used to do them by hand physically, so, I mean, you essentially have to put someone there for a week, sitting on a chair, counting people.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Allen?
Thank you, Council President Pro Temp. I have a couple of questions, a couple of statements, and then a couple of questions. So I'm hearing, I'm glad to hear that we would contemplate a lower speed for Hobart Avenue. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that I would absolutely advocate for lower speed anytime. I'm hearing that we would not contemplate extending the sidewalk closer to the arboretum. Is that correct? We would not contemplate that?
Yes, through you, Council President. What, what Councilmember Hamlet has suggested would be a mid-block crossing, so it's not at an intersection that has, that has a lot more criteria, and it's, it's harder to, to meet the, the warrants to do that, so...
Okay. Significantly harder?
Um, we could take a look at it, just, just to cross it off, but it, it is definitely, you know, it's, it's easier to install them at a, a legal public intersection than...
Okay.
We do, we do have some, like at the Promenade is one, and there's a few other areas, but typically, you look to put them at intersections.
Okay. I, I would say, just my opinion, as a, just as a resident and non-engineer, I feel like it's not a bad idea in the sense that it's a destination, so while it's in the middle of the road, as a destination stop, it would make sense if you had a big, wide crosswalk with lots of lights, so, but that's great, if you're willing to look at that. I don't know how that would affect tonight, that's the only thing. Is that something that would be considered? If we voted yesterday, this passed, would that be something you would consider? Or is this totally out of scope of the RFP?
It's, if it's a matter of just moving the, the crosswalk, you know, 50, 100 feet further down, it, it's a function of what it actually entails. Because if you start getting into 200, 300 feet, that's, that's vastly changing the scope of the project.
Okay.
If it's just a little bit, and we could just take a quick look just to, to verify, but if, if it's major and it's moving at 300, 400 feet, that, that would change the scope drastically.
Okay. And then, I, I really do, through you, Council President Pro Temp, I do want to speak directly to Mary, because we were there today at the House, and I, I hear your concern, but what I've heard tonight for me, and I just want to say this personally, because it's important to me, what I hear that's most concerning to me is that a crosswalk at the bottom at the bottom of a hill, it didn't really think, I didn't think about it when we were at your house today, but I would be concerned with people coming down the hill in bad weather and kind of plowing through that crosswalk. She has a question?
Is it cross, Ridge Road at the bottom of the hill?
Okay. And that they always. Oh, okay. All right. And we haven't had any issues?
There's a crosswalk at the bottom of Ridge Road, crossing Ridge Road that is used by thousands of people per week, especially arboretum.
I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry you have to come to the.
Oh, yeah.
You can't hear, they can't hear you online.
Come.
They can't hear you online.
Erin can, can say that.
Erin Shuff.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
And I hear that you're speaking to us and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
It was that crosswalk.
Okay, but that's, okay, that's on, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
That's already in existence.
Okay. Okay. I, I just, and no one's been injured when, okay. Well, I'll keep going. So did, that was a point of concern, just listening to that. One question I had is, and not that stop signs are always the most popular, but I just have to ask this question. Would we consider putting a stop sign to literally stop people so that they're not plowing through?
Likely does not meet any of the warrants for it because you have, Ridge Road is far, well, we did pull one up at Witridge. Witridge and Hobart are more comparable roads than, than Ridge. But, but likely does not meet any of the warrants to do so, so.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then my final is code for parking. Is there any way to find out, since it was brought up through you, Council President, is there a code for arboretum parking? It would be great to, to understand of that. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Are you asking that of?
I'm asking broadly, is there a code for parking for arboretum? Like, is there a maximum that they should have referencing?
Who would answer that? Is that your question to, because that's a, that's a zoning question? And we can get back to you on that, Councilwoman Allen.
Yeah, we, we'd have to get, it's very gray because it's technically city land, but it's leased to someone, but they're not before us with an application to require them to do more. Is there specific parking requirements for arboretums? It might just fall into Club or Park or something. But we'll, we'll have to get back with a, a formal answer here.
Please, I see we have a member of the public who's asking. We're going to let her go first, Mary.
So hello, my name is Monica Richter, 11 Fernwood. The name might be familiar because I wrote to Council three years ago when I was a member of the Board of Reeves Street Arboretum. It was under duress that we were sending that letter to you all at the time, three years ago already, because as our governing accountability, we were so appalled at the traffic, the pedestrians trying to get to this gem of a city property, as was just confirmed. And it is so unsafe. So my request today, in my book of business where I work, we have something called analysis paralysis. This has been gone over and over and over for years. You've had the engineer out so many times. Yes, there are other things coming up tonight. You can put in a new speed limit. You can talk about parking at the arboretum, but it's an historic house on historic grounds. We'd have to investigate that. The fact of the matter is we still do not have a sidewalk. There are 100,000 people that do come. As the letter stated three years ago, this is a problem where someone will die. I had submitted a photograph to Councilwoman Hamlet. I'd like to show that or you could pass it around. We have wheelchairs, strollers, bicycles, kids in the street every day coming to a city property. It's about the sidewalk, please. We can't keep delaying the vote to put a sidewalk to this property when there are 100,000 people coming to city land. You don't do pedestrian studies for a school. Why would we now delay the vote to do another pedestrian study when it is pedestrian chaos because we are not guiding them? As voices of reason, please put in a sidewalk.
You could come to the. She has no leg.
I was simply just going to give a little bit of historical background. In 2008, there was an effort on the part of the city of Summit to erect sidewalks on both sides of the street, Ridge on Hobart Avenue. I and the, one of the residents in 160 Hobart and one of the residents in 220 Hobart, own prop, three property owners, talked to, at that, that time, the head of Community Services was Karen.
Beth Kenny. Beth Kenny.
Okay. And we just said, it is really not a good idea to put sidewalks on Hobart Avenue. That it's so dangerous because of the speeding, that I, for example, had little kids that I was sending to Lincoln School. I told them, go up to Fernwood, go up down Fernwood and stay away from Hobart. And that prevailed at that particular point.
Thank you.
Secondly, and this is the last point, once this started two years ago, I happened to be in New England and we visited several arboretums and beautiful gardens. And this is admittedly very anecdotal, two cases. One was Ry, New Hampshire, where a former governor of New Hampshire had an estate. When he died, it was converted into a beautiful Fuller Gardens. I recommend that you all go there. And if you look at the map, huge parking lot, right in the middle of all of those gardens. The second example I took was from Falmouth, Massachusetts. Spores Gardens was the name of the place. And that was deep in a kind of wooded area bordering on the water of Cape Cod. Again, they had provided their own parking by carving out an area of the forest, really, and you parked your car there. So there were about 25 cars in that parking lot. So if we could possibly mitigate the parking situation, that would be great on Hobart Avenue, especially for these events. And if we could somehow help the arboretum actually set up a reasonably sized parking lot within its own grounds, I would be all in favor of that.
Thank you.
But Hobart Avenue is a conundrum. It's speedy. It's dangerous. Good luck.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Because we're going to close this out.
I'm Jay Brinkerhoff. I was a signature to that letter that Monica wrote a few years ago as an officer of the arboretum.
Jay, I think you're going to need to put the mic up so.
The thing you need to understand is the most dangerous activity is at events at the arboretum, when people use the street, they walk in the street because there's no sidewalk to push a wheelchair. There's no, you can't push a stroller in the heavy gravel that exists on the east side. If that was paved, those people who are currently walking in the street, the most dangerous activity, would goes away. Yes, it's busy. Yes, the street, people drive too fast. But we can address the single most important danger and by building the sidewalk and getting those people who are on bicycles, with strollers, with wheelchairs, onto a sidewalk and not walking on Hobart Avenue. That's what we need to talk about. And I want to make one other point. The notion of moving the crossing further north, there's a hill there. It's a straightaway, but there's a hill. You don't want to have a crossing near the hill as you rise up and then come back down. Sorry. That's not, once that gets investigated and looked at carefully, I'm sure that will be rejected. A sidewalk near the top of the hill provides no visibility in either direction. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, can I make a comment?
A brief one?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Jay, for your comments. And I would say, I don't know if, Erin, you feel like getting up and showing it on the Google Maps. I looked, I, I completely did not think it would be possible either. And I would say that as many of you might have been listening to this topic for the last three years, I just learned about it two or three weeks ago. So by the time I actually get to speak with residents, spend time with Monica, talk to the Parrises, talk to the McCanns, talk to 155, talk to Mary, it does take a long time to do the right thing as a new councilperson. And I would ask for your patience. Sometimes asking questions doesn't mean you're against something. You just want to make sure that you're doing the right thing. So this is the straightaway that I'm talking about. And Jay, actually, take another look at it because I thought the same thing as you originally. But when I, I live at the bottom of Beacon Road. And I will tell you, on Daffodil Day, everybody parks on Beacon Road, goes up Hobart. This straightaway is worth looking at for the, for the simple reason that you have probably 30% of your cars parking on Beacon Road. A lot. I mean, they wrap around all the way down Fernwood. I, I see it. It's, I live there. And I, I would just argue that where are those people crossing? They're not going to go to Hobart or Ridge. They're just not. And so I'm not saying, one, I just think, I think it is worth looking at. That's all I'm saying. I do, I do, I see what you mean, but the, the bend around Hobart is dan, is the bend around the Parrises is so dangerous. I, I live there. And I just think we should just think about it a little more. How, when are, when are the bids due? What's like the drop dead day? Do we have two weeks?
So the bidding law gives you 60 days from the date of receipt of bid, so which that expires before the next council meeting. So if there's no action taken tonight, we can request from the bidders if they'll still honor their price for a certain time period. And, and then they have the option to do it or not do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So if we're not going to have any more comments, I would like to change this, Madam Clerk, to a roll call vote. And, and.
Ready?
Yes.
Ms. Allen? Ms. Fox? Ms. Hamlet?
Nay.
Mr. Miniger?
Solid points on both sides of this, but aye.
And President Hairston?
Aye.
So we have one, two, three, four. Okay. Pass the seat.
And this resolution passes. And now, ready to move on to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now moving on to the point in the agenda where members of the public have an opportunity to comment on tonight's agenda.
Not agenda.
Excuse me, not agenda. Things, items that are not on the agenda. And I am going to, I hear my Councilmember Miniger asking to speak.
I'm just going to ask if there is a chance that we could take a three-minute break. It's at the 10 o'clock mark.
I thank you for reminding me of that agreement. So let's be back here promptly. A five-minute break, that would put us at 10:05. So that means quick, quick moving to the restroom. Okay, so now we are going to move to public comments. And I would ask everyone to, glad you're here, and I would ask you to stick to our three-minute guidelines. We're late. And please line up, and you know the routine, state your name and address.
Bonnie Morrison Rotary Drive. Could we please get an update on paving of Summit Avenue, Division Avenue, and Park Avenue? Thank you.
Summit Avenue. Division Avenue. And that, did you say Morris?
Park.
Park Avenue.
David, 90100 West End Avenue. I saw in the news that with regard to the former Selgin East Campus, we are going to have a new tenant, which is a spinoff of Johnson &amp; Johnson. As we all know, or we, or people should know, about 82% of our taxes are paid by residents. And therefore, if there's an increase in the commercial tax base, that helps to defer our residential taxes. This new investment in our town will have an impact, I'm sure, in that, or at least I hope that it does. And so my question, and I'm not expecting an answer right now because I don't think that you would have an answer right now, but if you do, I would like to understand, and I think the public would appreciate understanding, what the impact of having this new tenant at that site will do to our tax base. The article I saw said that they were paying about $10 million in rental for the next 15 years and have planned to use about 265,000 square feet of that site. And so that's a pretty large, significant portion of that site. So it would be good, I think, for the public to get an update, not necessarily right now, but if, but when we have the next council meeting or so, if there's an analysis, a back-of-the-envelope analysis of what the tax impact would be. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Tracy Keegan, 15 Sweetbrier Road. Before I make my comments, I just want to quickly say, send out a big thank you to you all, all councilmembers and city employees alike. I know how hard you work on behalf of our city, sometimes very long days, 1:30 in the morning, I've heard. And so I want to know that, you to know that your hard work does not go unnoticed and that it's much appreciated. So thank you. Now getting to my comments. We have just heard our city administrator indicate that the actions of our common council were legal when it comes to the closure of Maple Street in 2022. The presentation made clear that even though the process might be difficult, it is legal to close down Maple, as long as we do our due diligence. As we've heard from two separate public polls, one done by SDI and one done by Councilmember Lisa Allen, a majority of our community, which looks to be about 70% of residents polled, would like to see some iteration of Maple Street closure going forward. Meanwhile, a small group of people who want to stop street closure for outdoor dining have been tenacious in their attempts to do so, even threatening to escalate the situation, which I would imagine could include taking legal action. Based on what I just heard our administrator say, any escalation would lack merit, given council acted legally. But it still worries me because Councilmember Allen's very public verbal and written apologies for her yes vote on the street closure and the inference that other members of council knowingly did something wrong or even illegal, could be looked upon by a court as an admission of guilt on behalf of council. This would be very damaging to our community. I am concerned that those who are protecting their private interests over the public's will will try to stay, to, will try to maneuver the city into a situation where it would have to defend itself, with their end goal being to quash any future attempts at closing Maple Street. I'm concerned that someone or some group of people might try and use Councilmember Allen's letter to the editor, as now debunked evidence, that the city did something wrong. I'm concerned that some people are using public confusion and/or absolute exhaustion on this issue as a political cudgel. For this reason, I think it's important that Ms. Allen clarify verbally and in writing whether she still believes that our council did something wrong. I'm worried that her comments, while they may have been completely well-intentioned, have put the city in a bad position. And it's important to mitigate the damage, especially now that we know the facts. Thank you.
I'm glad it's not 2:15 the next day. I'm Gil Orrin, 45 Wallace Road, and have my building and business downtown. I completely disagree with the, the young lady who just spoke, saying it's legal. It's not legal. There's been a mistake made that, that was acknowledged, an apology and accepted. There's been a mistake made that was acknowledged, and apology and accepted. There's no question in my mind that a DOT approval was required when we started. And in my timeline, that was acknowledged before the pedestrian mall was considered. And the application, there was a statement, the application would be made for the DOT, but it was going to take time. In the meantime, pedestrian mall was pursued. The statute is very clear. It was illegal not to go to DOT and get approval. It wasn't legal, this, this, this process. And the, at the, and then, there's no question, you can't use another town's application to say, well, that's similar, so it's okay, we can just, we'll, we'll go along with this until something happens. In August 2nd, the DOT made it clear, clear, that approval was required. No question about it. It's very clear in the, in my timeline. And then nothing was done. August, October, August, September, October, November, we continued without applying or without stopping. So let's clear the record.
Let's do that right now.
Right.
Mr. Orin, let's have our attorney respond to you.
Well, I.
You know what? Before you do that, let's hear the comments, then I'll respond.
Okay.
I'm not going to get into back and forth.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'm taking notes.
Well, I will submit my timeline. Okay?
Council President Pro Temp, I would just like to say that it's been made clear that we, as a council, are not going to speak. So I've been addressed directly, and I just wanted to be clear that we have made a decision as a council that our council is going to, our council is going to answer that.
As best I can, as long as it's before 2:00 AM.
And when will that be?
As long as it's before 2:00 AM. If it's after 2:00 AM.
2:15.
All right. You're on.
Well, can you answer so we know?
I'm going to, I'm going to hear all the questions I'm going to try to at once.
Who's next?
All right, Kevin McGoye, Woodland Avenue. I'm really confused now. Michael, you're the man. I appreciate, you know, you taking responsibility for this, but, you know, it's, it's not your responsibility. I thought you made it very clear that we thought that we didn't need DOT approval under the pedestrian mall, but we, in August, it was very clear that we did need DOT approval. We needed to submit the ordinance to the DOT, as Milburn had done in July, when they got approval. It's very clear. I think that in your comments, I haven't read your comments, you mentioned the special improvement district. Under Title 39, it's clear, there's, there's no exception for the special improvement district. I am interested in hearing what you're, you're going to say. But, so I think that you unequivocally said that we were supposed to get NJDOT approval. We never got NJDOT approval. It was a mistake originally, and then we found out in August that we needed to, but, and we knew we didn't have it. That's really the problem. But whatever, these are mistakes. And mistakes happen. And there's been a lot of mistakes over the last couple of years. And again, I didn't get involved with Maple Street, I didn't even listen to it. I don't even think you probably paid attention to it because we were embroiled in what was going on with, with Broad Street West. So that's why I know that, like, you really weren't involved. And Erin, nobody's trying to skewer you. We were just trying to understand how people didn't know. And Mayor, you knew in August that we got this, that we were supposed to have submitted it, and then it was, well, what do we do? We close it? Nobody's complaining, everybody loves it. That's really where it gets a little complicated, because now we know we didn't do what we were supposed to do. But it, the law is very, very clear. We, we needed NJDOT approval to do this under a pedestrian mall. Now, the other issue that I had was, and I, and I sent emails to everybody on council who voted for it at the time, to understand the ordinance that was written was very clear, right? And Mr. Giacobi, on March 7th, you talked about outside of an executive order, there's a lot of studies and things you need to do in order to close a public roadway. And there was, the executive order we've established expired. So 2022, we needed to do all those studies. On March 7th, you made it very clear the city's never done the studies. So my question is, when you read that ordinance, it comes to conclusions that many residents, lawyers and building owners and everything else, presented before you guys voted, you can, I went back and watched this just to understand, really, you had people explicitly telling you the legal issues with the ordinance you were signing into law. Okay? So my question is, Mr. Giacobi made it very clear that he understands to close a public roadway without an executive order takes a lot of studies and due diligence. But he also knew that we never did it. So did he opine, or did anybody opine on the legality of the ordinance you're putting into place? Because it's troubling. And that's what I think Ms. Allen was referencing in her apology. She said, look, I screwed up. And saying you screwed up is not going to expose the city to any liability. What exposed the city to liability was improperly and illegally closing a major thoroughfare without any kind of safety studies, without any kind of due diligence. That's what exposed the city. It's her, it doesn't matter. She could say like, ah, whatever, it doesn't matter. If somebody sues, it's very clear, they're going to look at the facts, and the facts are very simple. The law is very simple. I'm very interested in hearing Matt's analysis to it. But I mean, if we're going to stand now at this point in time, and this is important because this, again, this goes back to Broad Street West and what happened there. If we just would have listened to people, if more people would have done work, and I understand that you guys are very, very busy, but, you know, and again, I don't want to get into personal accusations, you all have to understand that there is a real lack of knowledge about the project as a whole by a lot of you. But you were convinced that this is the right thing to do. And when people tried to inform you and help you not make a mistake, and that would have been the biggest mistake in decades of Summit, if not history, if that building was built. And I think we all know that now. But it wasn't one of you who decided to spin this around. It was Michael. And it was off of one piece of information. And I don't even know if you all know that. I mean, I know it. Some of you know it, I know you know it. I know you know it because I told you. I don't know if you know it, I don't know if Andy knows it, I think you know it. But it's concerning because you keep having these big mistakes. And then, you know, Marjorie Fox, you were like, what did people mean by process? You keep making mistakes because you're not informed, you're not doing this intentionally. Like, I don't think you're out there trying to make mistakes. But it, but bothers me is that, like, these are big mistakes. Like, you illegally closed a road, right? Like, forget about the legality and the liability of it. What if somebody lost their life? When I went back and looked at what the fire chief said at the time, I can hear, go back and look at what he said. He said, like, you know, people talked about response times, and he said, yeah, you know, if there was a fire in one of the buildings, yeah, I mean, that would be a problem, that would slow things down. But that's not even a safety study. That's just saying it's something happened there. So, you know, there, you really did put people at harm unintentionally. Like, I'm not saying any of you meant to do this. But it's, if you would have followed the law, and if you would have followed the guidelines and done the work, you would have realized some of the risks you're exposing people to. And, you know, we can talk about, like.
Wrapping it up.
Yeah, no, I know. We can talk about the, the number of mistakes. But I think the problem with this is that it's not political. It's really not. Like, I voted for all you people, I wish you all were Republicans, so that I could feel a little bit better about myself here. I wouldn't be attacked by certain people in here. Chief, you may need to walk me to my car. So, like, just to reflect on it, like, the issue is, mistakes keep happening for the same reasons. And then when, when, when people try to help you, your decision's already made. You don't listen. Like, at least that's the impression of a lot of people, because when I see people make comments, I've told you guys a lot of things, and that it was dismissed. Orin, I mean, Gil Orin, Tony, there were a number of people, and I can send you guys video clips because I went back and put them together, specifically telling you issues that are the problems with this. And Erin, it's, it's not you, you're just trying to do something, and you try to do the best.
Thank you, Mr. McGoye.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Palowski, Three Crest Acre Court. We saw a slew of letters to the editor this week calling for civility, accusing residents of manufacturing issues just to complain, admonishing that our children are watching, and generally suggesting that certain residents need to get with the program. If we truly care about Summit, we will continue to ask hard questions. Hard questions can be uncomfortable, but still perfectly civil. And more often than not these days, hard questions are necessary. We must be free to question everything, or we will learn nothing. Healthy discussion and open discourse drive great ideas. Our city is at the foot of the dais. We are engaged. If we were not, had our community simply stayed in its lane, we would have a nightmare at Broad Street West. It's not hard to see why this council has lost the trust of so many in Summit. Our simple and straightforward questions to council routinely go unanswered. And when council does answer, its answers often change from meeting to meeting. Our last Maple Street closure is the perfect example. After the DOT rejected our resolution for a seasonal closure, council passed an ordinance, including some questionable conclusions. The community asked whether the council did its due diligence in drawing these conclusions, and whether it secured written DOT approval. Council repeatedly said, yes, of course, we would never close a street without doing the work and getting all, all the necessary approvals. Council told us that if we didn't do everything we were supposed to do, DOT would never have approved our closure, our closure. Council said it would produce the written approval, but it couldn't because DOT never approved. Then, council members told us on Facebook Live that just because the city didn't get written approval, it still had DOT's blessing, suggesting some kind of verbal approval. But there's no such thing. Then, council president told a resident in an email that when the city told DOT we intended to close Maple Street, DOT neither objected nor tried to stop us. So it must have been okay. Does anyone really believe that the state of New Jersey deals in affirmation by silence? Now I hear some are claiming that we didn't even need DOT approval for the closure, even though the council proclaimed that very need in, in at least four resolutions. Whatever are the answers, we should have known them before the first table hit the asphalt. If we didn't, there's a major problem with our processes. If we did and ignored these longstanding and straightforward requirements, that's an even bigger problem. Either way, residents have good reason to ask questions. Some LTE authors characterize the community's questions and its resistance to the last session's vote on the continuum of care as anti-COC and cruel. This is a grossness characterization of what happened, and I urge everyone to watch the meeting on YouTube to see for themselves. Those critical were critical of the timing of the council's vote, namely because the council could not answer simple questions and kept changing the answers that it gave. One meeting, council told us we had to join immediately because money's available now, and we need money now. The next meeting, the council told us we weren't even planning on taking any money, we just wanted information. Council told us we had to go to meetings to get information, and we needed to join the COC to attend the meetings. But that wasn't true either. The COC said council members absolutely could attend without joining. Whether these inconsistencies are accidental or deliberate, we have every right to question them. When did it become uncivil to ask tough questions? Our children are watching. We do them a profound disservice when we stay in our lane and go with the program. We must teach our children to ask questions fearlessly, to demand honest answers, to learn and to think for themselves. And Summit deserves no less from this council. One more, Ben? I spoke to Jamie Applinger last Friday, and I asked her whether DOT approval was required for a road closure in a special improvement district. There's no exception. She said no matter what. If a town wants to close a road, they need DOT approval.
Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. Now I'm really confused because I've spoken to some real lawyers who say, who have spoken to the DOT that say that we do need approval by them to close a street in excess of 48 hours. And Michael said tonight that we didn't need the approval. So I think that there is still some confusion in the room, but, you know, I, the, the one thing I did have a question about was, when you declared Maple Street a pedestrian plaza, it says, where as in accordance with NJSA 40-56-68, the common council finds that Maple Street or any part thereof is not part of a state highway, is located primarily in a business district, yes. Reasonably convenient alternate routes to other parts of municipality and state exist for private vehicles. I'm not sure that that was ever done prior to declaring Maple Street a pedestrian mall. The continued unlimited use of Maple Street or part thereof by private vehicles may constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians. Have also asked council how they were able to verify that. Again, I'm not sure that any studies were done prior to passing this ordinance, so not, so not sure how you came to that conclusion. But it is in the best interest of the municipality and the public and of public, and of benefit to adjacent properties to use such street primarily for pedestrian purposes, and that pedestrian use is determined to be the highest and best use of such, such street or part thereof. So again, like, I'm just really confused how this council, whether we need a DOT approval or not, which it seems we'll get an answer in the upcoming days, how you guys were able to justify meeting all of the criteria for making Maple Street a pedestrian mall in accordance with the law.
Thank you.
I have a question multiple. Oh, and I just want to conclude by saying I am part of the 75% that supports a closure of Maple Street for part of the year. So I'm not the anti-cruel.
Hi, Miriam Zahn, 65 Woodland. Thank you for, you know, taking everybody's questions tonight. I think there is, shows there's a lot of work that everybody has to put in to get to the right answers here. And I'm here asking for Summit to do some work as well about a different subject. So we had a lot of rain over the weekend, over three inches in two days, probably four inches cumulatively in the last few days. And while that's a nuisance for many, there are neighborhoods in Summit where this amount of rain can be particularly problematic. And on Monday, I spoke to one of the city engineers, and he mentioned that Waverly, Hughes, and the low point between Shadyside and Woodland are among areas where the city is aware of drainage problems. According to the engineer, the city started enforcing stormwater management in 2006, and that coincides with when New Jersey DEP passed stormwater, stormwater management rules. Therefore, the runoff of any house built prior to 2006 is often unrestricted and grandfathered in, so to speak, which means that you don't have to manage your stormwater, even if you cover 75% of your lot. If you were to build a house right now and cover 75% of your lot, well, it probably wouldn't pass. But if it did, you would be putting in mega stormwater management systems, probably under your house, under the rest of your lot, and maybe, you know, the road too, doing some roadwork, connecting to a sewer or something. But a lot of houses in Summit, most houses, have unrestricted runoff. Since 2006, Summit has applied stormwater management rules to any new impervious cover that is over 300 square feet. Anything less than 300 square feet is considered de minimis addition, and stormwater management is not required. So when you call something de minimis, I think it suggests that it's, has negligible to no impact, right? And I just want you to consider the following. When stormwater management is required, Summit's design standard is to provide enough storage to hold three inches of rain for each square foot of impervious cover. So that's less than the amount of rain that we got in the last four days. Three inches of rain over 300 square feet, that's our de minimis status, translates to 75 cubic feet, which is five feet by five feet by five feet, you know, put a box around me. You can put 561. You can put 561 gallons in 75 cubic feet. Now imagine you're dumping that 561 gallons of water into an area where there are known to be stormwater management issues. And imagine that this is happening during a heavy storm where this area is already seeing a surge of water. Is it still de minimis? Okay, now imagine that there are 10 houses that have been granted a de minimis exemption for seemingly small projects on their property. All of a sudden, you have more than 5,600 gallons of stormwater that are running off onto someone else's property. The impact of this exempted runoff to the downstream homeowner is not de minimis. And keep in mind that this runoff is in addition to all the runoff that has already been grandfathered in from that existing structure and to all the rain that is already falling on the homeowner's property. So why am I saying this? Well, I happen to live in one of the neighborhoods that there, where there are known stormwater issues, and my house is at a low point and is the collection point for runoff from at least 10 surrounding homes. We have a backyard drain that connects to the storm sewer. The city has told us that the drain on our property is our private drain and not property of the city. Yet, the city has effectively allowed people to discharge additional runoff to my private drain by granting de minimis exemptions to uphill houses. My engineer has stated on record that our drain does not have the capacity to handle additional runoff. Despite this knowledge and a request from us to require stormwater management for impervious cover in a house near us, in 2021, the zoning board granted a stormwater management exemption to a homeowner or two houses above us. That house has no stormwater management, 53% impervious cover that was already coming and running off to our property. So like much of the runoff from Shadyside that has been exempted from stormwater management, the runoff generated by this new impervious cover will land on my property. I don't believe that the city should grant exemptions when they put another homeowner on the hook for dealing with a stormwater drainage problem. And that's exactly what's happened with my property and my drain. I also believe that the city should be looking to improve areas where stormwater management issues exist, and I feel like some of that actually might have been part of agenda items this evening. So this is sort of in keeping with that. At this time, I'd like to ask council to take action in two ways. One, I request that you modify our ordinance to prohibit exemptions for de minimis stormwater discharges in areas where the existing drainage conditions are known to be problematic. This would help any neighborhood that has existing runoff problems, and, you know, I cited three in the beginning that the engineer mentioned. The second is I also request that the city takes ownership of my drain, which provides drainage for 10 additional homes. As owner, the city could redesign the drain to include a pump if needed or resize the pipe in a way that accommodates the runoff that the city has allowed and continues to allow to discharge to it. Thank you.
Oh, it's excellent. I hope you give your comments, please.
I, yeah, I can just pass.
Email them if you didn't want to give them. You can email them to our city clerk. Thank you.
Hi, Tara Gagliano, 6 Ashwood Court. So I have a couple of questions for you guys. One being, I literally go up to town hall twice a week and drag my two-year-old and try to get questions answered about the progress of my property, as to where we stand. And this morning, I actually, after I saw Matt Delory, he emailed and said that, basically the same thing. This is what I'm hearing. It's with the attorneys. They have to hash it out. They have to figure out who's fixing what. We have a settlement agreement, okay? The bottom line is Habitat busted my wall. They're to replace it, number one. And New Jersey American Water did the damage to my driveway, my Belgium block, my lawn. So why do I have to suffer? And my kids, looking at that, for so, it's going on almost a year now. They've openly said that they're done on our side, which is horrific the way that they left this city piece of property. Which, by the way, today I witnessed an elderly woman coming down from the park line, accessing the private property of Habitat, walking through, down the walkway in front of my house, and jumping the sill fence. And when questioned what she was doing, she said, I just didn't want to walk around. So my other question to you is, progress on my property and when is that getting fixed, number one? Do I have to get an attorney to move this along? And I was, we were told through Matt Delory that it's now with the city council to then, I guess, expedite this process. It's, I'm just hearing the same thing over and over and over again, and I'm very frustrated. Because in the meantime, we are having a lot of rain. There's a sill fence which I had to request to be put up to protect my private drain, which the city would not. The city would not help us with our, the runoff from the Italian American Club. And the city forced us to put and give us a timeline of a $30,000 private drain on our property. So now my front drain is now blocked off because that sill fence, the way that they left it, okay? There's all debris and whatnot. I can't have that runoff into my drain because it's my responsibility to then clean it out. And that drain goes all the way out through Ashwood Court to Ashwood Avenue. So what, I just want to restore my property and get it back to the way that it was. And I also want to know how you guys are going to address this cut-through issue because now that's trespassing, okay? So what are we doing with this now that we have a park line entrance? And why is the park line open? How are people able to access the park line at this point when the agreement with the screening hasn't even gotten up? Which, by the way, we operated and we got denied for what the screening's supposed to look like. That too, because I'm impacted by everything here, okay? So now my third big question is, tonight, actually tonight, I saw there were people on the Habitat property, and I guess they were having a meet and greet, if you will. And it looked like it was the residents who were now going into the completed building. The completed, the other building is not completed, which is up against my house. Are they issuing a CO for those residents to go in there? Because if they are, where are they parking with active construction going on? And where are the contractors parking? Because now we're going back to Ashwood Court as the access. And I want to know why the entire sidewalk is not blocked off. Because people think that this is a throughway, and it's not. It's not an access point. And I think, I think when, it wasn't necessarily all of you guys, but when this was put through and the sidewalk was just like, we need this sidewalk, the due diligence wasn't done there because you have an access point here on the Habitat property for the skyline or the park line, whatever you want to call it. And now you're doing a sidewalk. Nobody thought about that. So now that, is that city property? Is that sidewalk city property, giving access to a private property? I mean, how are we handling that?
Thank you, Ms. Gagliano. I've written down here four things that you're asking for response to that I think we can respond to those.
I hope so, because every time I try to ask these questions, and I'm not, I just, I just want this to end, okay? At the end of the day, I want my property the way it was. I don't want to deal with Habitat anymore. They're horrible. They're not nice. We issued them an easement agreement to help the property get built. And at the end of the day, it very, it's very much similar to the COC, what happened here. Our comments were given, and it was just, went to the wayside, and everybody had their decision made. But at the end of the day, I just, I just want my property restored. I want my kids to be safe, okay? I have a four and a two-year-old. And I'm, I'm just, I cannot believe the way the city property was left. And I don't know who inspected it. I don't know because it's an engineering issue because it's not attached to a building, that sidewalk. So somebody had to inspect it. And for them to come and inspect it and be like, okay, this is fine, and leave it the way that they left it, that's disgraceful. So whoever that inspector is, they, somebody should look into that.
We'll get back to you. I know that Matt Delory has been emailing back and forth with you, and he is, he is working on this. I mean.
I know he is, but at the end of the day, it's like the same thing. And it's this, like, it's a sell.
Well, we'll look into the, I'll look, I'll have the list from Susan, and I'll be in the office first thing in the morning.
Are we finished with our public comments? Okay, so our council.
You're in luck since it's not 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, let's do it.
So where's Tara? Matt Delory sent my office some emails. We're going to jump on it, okay?
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we'll do it. It has to be done legally.
Yeah. And not on my pocket.
On your stormwater thing, I can't answer those questions. That's above my pay grade. So listen, let me talk to you. This, I'm going to talk about the Maple Street.
Matt, they're saying your microphone.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? So let me start. Gil, you said something that I just want to touch base, and I think Mr. McGoy said it too. In looking through this, the April, I'm sorry, the August 2nd email is definitely an important email, and it's contained in this packet. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's Jamie Oplinger. She gives two different options to do a closure. One's for less than a calendar year temporary, one's for more than a calendar year permanent. If it's permanent, you rely on Title 39, which requires DOT approval. If it's temporary, they rely on 4067, 16.9, and 16.10, which requires DOT approval. So I'm not going to dispute DOT approval. I think I've been fairly consistent when I've said this thing. There's different statutes, but DOT, when you're closing a road, DOT looks at it and has to approve it. So I think that the one thing that I think everyone should look at is what Ms. Oplinger writes. "As mentioned, Milburn did a temporary pedestrian mall instead of following the above temporary process. Either way is acceptable. If Summit is interested in pursuing any of the above options, my mailing address is blank." And you can, you can look through all this stuff, you know, when Michael posted. And Gil, I agree with you. We're not looking to say, oh, you know, Milburn got it right, so we got to pass. But I think if you understand the facts of what happened, and it's laid out. So you pass the ordinance, you send it to DOT for approval, and we did that, and we did.
Thanks.
Please stop. I didn't interrupt any of you. Don't interrupt me. The ordinance, whenever it's gone to DOT approval, whether it's on all these different specifications. Let me explain that the, the ordinance was passed in Summit. The resolutions that were passed in '20 and '21, those were sent to DOT. The ordinance that was passed in Summit in May, the engineer from Milburn said, can I get a copy of ordinance? That was shared with Milburn. Milburn, in June, adopted virtually the identical ordinance. And what Michael explained was, the one difference is that Milburn sent in a letter with the copy of the ordinance on July 1st, and in the letter, the, the, it's, the letter's here. It's true.
They did study.
I didn't investigate Milburn. I'm not going to be interrupted. They sent in a letter with the ordinance. And what DOT, DOT did approve Milburn's temporary ordinance. The ordinance was identical to, it was shared by, by, so putting that aside, Mr. McGoy, you said it right. Mistakes happen. And should, should have, should the temporary pedestrian mall have been sent? Are you going to, do you want to sit up here and give the answers? Because you like to interrupt people all the time. Please stop. So the governing body, when they passed the ordinance, they acted legally. They absolutely, the ordinance itself is legal. The DOT approved the same ordinance in Milburn, almost word for word.
It's a different street.
You continue to interrupt. You really have to stop. It's, you know, we're adults. So Mr. Rogers made it clear that on August 2nd, it was clear that DOT needed approval, okay? So there was no omission, not a commission, an omission. It wasn't mailed down. And would have DOT approved it? I think there's a high likelihood they probably would have approved it, based on what happened in Milburn. But I'm not an engineer, and I don't work for DOT. The reality is that nobody in the engineering department, Michael Rogers' department, nobody did anything to harm people, to have subreviews and hide things and do it clandestinely. When you look at this memo that Michael put together, you can see that Erin Traeger was contacting DOT on numerous occasions. And I think that there was a lot, a lack of clarity from DOT on how can you do it temporarily? Because the one issue is, is that the major access permit, that is a very arduous process. You can't do that temporarily. So how do you do it temporarily? And August 2nd, the DOT actually sends back a sample ordinance for them to use and says you can do it anyway, you can do it, one of these three ways. You could follow what Milburn did. So at the end of the day, DOT approval was needed. It wasn't obtained, but it wasn't obtained, so we're clear, in Milburn. Let me just back up. Milburn passed their ordinance. They closed the road. Excuse me. I, Milburn closed their road. Almost three weeks after they closed their road, Main Street, they sent it to DOT for approval. So they passed the ordinance, they closed the road, they sent it to DOT, and DOT approved it. So I, I can't predict what DOT, I would, I would venture to guess that DOT probably would approve it in Summit if it had been sent in. But at the end of the day, nobody, if there was a mistake made, that's fine. I truly believe that council didn't do anything illegally. The council passed an ordinance. They vote, they introduce, they pass an ordinance, and they rely on their professionals. And if somebody omitted or failed to do something, that's what happened. And so we're not trying to cascade anybody. People are doing their jobs and do their due diligence. Let's understand something, that Maple Street was closed in '20 and in '21, and it was closed in the same manner in terms of ballards and all that stuff. People were, the engineering department was consulting with the police and things like that. They weren't just putting up red tape. But it's clear that, and I think somebody made the suggestion, might have been one of the council people, in the future, if there's going to be a closure, whenever DOT approval is done, that'll be included with the ordinance. So that's, that's my statement on it. I'm not taking questions. I answered it. Sorry. I'm done. Thank you.
You said you didn't know if Milburn.
City Council. Council President may ask a question.
Mr. McGoy, you cannot speak. You cannot speak. And I need you to abide by that, or you will be escorted out. Thank you.
May I ask a question, Council President? Sure. You said something very important just now, and it was that, and it was a quote from Administrator Rogers' last statement here. "In conclusion, the common council passed a temporary pedestrian ordinance in accordance with the law." So it's important for me to ask this question now because I think there is some confusion. People have said there is confusion. Did common council do anything illegal in closing Maple Street in 2022?
What common council, so common council's job is to pass an ordinance. The ordinance that you passed is virtually identical to the ordinance that Milburn passed that was approved by DOT. So for anyone to say that the ordinance is illegal, well, if it was illegal, why was it approved by DOT, the ordinance in Milburn? That doesn't make sense. DOT approved it. In fact, DOT invites the city in the August 2nd. In fact, DOT invites the city in the August 2nd. Milburn did it. You could do the same way. Any, any of these things work. So clearly DOT thinks that that ordinance and that methodology works. What they, what they are suggesting is that in all these, whether it's under the 40, 67, 16, 9, 10, or the 39, you go to DOT. There's different ways of closing roads. The one difficulty I think that DOT was grappling with is, prior to COVID, there weren't street-side cafes. We weren't in, in France or Italy. It just, it didn't, it really didn't exist. And so I think DOT was grappling with, how do we do things on a temporary basis? And as you notice, and when you read the thing from Mr. Rod, from Mr. Rogers, there's a lengthy, Mr. Schreger is talking to people at the governor's office, the mayor, saying that this permanent access, this is not, this doesn't even fit what we're trying to do. And the governor's office said, so my que, my answer is, did the, the one thing that, that ultimately on August 2nd, we knew we needed to have definitively was DOT approval. So if we mailed it in, and I do believe that DOT would likely have approved it. That's just my, 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 you know, what I'm surmising from looking at what happened in Milburn. But the governing body, the common council, passing the ordinance, there's no, there's no issue with that. As I just said, the DOT didn't have an issue with the, almost identical ordinance in Milburn. And what we did previously in '20 and '21 is you passed the resolutions to close, and then you mailed it down to DOT for approval. So you take the action, you go down, get the approval, and then it comes back. So, again, my position is, is the governing body didn't do anything illegally at all. Did, did, did we have an omission? Yes. Should we have mailed something into DOT, the ordinance? Because they already had the detour map. The detour map was mailed in back in February. So should the ordinance have been mailed in? By August 2nd, I would say yes. So...
Okay. Thank you.
But you know, I, I mean, people are using the word illegal and things like that. I got to say something. When somebody, if somebody makes a mistake, it doesn't make it illegal. It's a mistake. And, 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 you know, there's a big difference that I learned in law school between omission and commission. And if somebody omits something because they made a mistake, you know what? We're all human. We make mistakes. You know, and, and I think that Michael, you know, as the chief executive of this, of this entity that oversees all the employees, you know, I, I give him a lot of credit. He's, he's saying, it's all I make. And I think that that, that takes, that takes a lot. And, you know, I think that people should just realize that nobody on this governing body attempted to influence Michael, or attempted to influence Mr. Schreger to do something illegal. That didn't happen. I looked into that. That absolutely did not happen. You have administration, these people all work. They all work and they have jobs. They come here at night and they stay till 2:00 in the morning. But they work. So the day-to-day operations are run by Michael and all of his staff, who do parking, and the police, and the fire, and the engineering. And, you know, so I think, I think that people have to realize that cascading the governing body, and if the governing body made misstatements, I don't think they did it purposely, because I think they were relying on the fact that previously DOT had approved things. So that's my statement. We can agree to disagree if you think, you know, but there's really nothing else for us to do. You know, if DOT thought this was a, they've been contacted numerous times about this. We haven't gotten a letter from DOT. And again, this happened in 2022. I don't think this will ever happen again. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby and Councilman Miniger. I believe you got your question answered.
Yes. Thank you.
In one moment, I wanted to make sure, in the comments that were raised by Ms. Gagliano, the, I think we can answer that question about the CO? Is that something?
Could I, could I just, I, Mr. Schreger reached out to me, not Mr. Schreger, I apologize. Now I'm getting late. Matt Delory reached out to me.
Okay.
About the issue.
Okay.
And asked us to get involved. And I would say, let's just hold off, because I, I want to look at it and, and, and we're going to pursue it legally.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Can I just, I'm sorry.
So just talk to me afterwards, if you want. I don't want to do it publicly, but I'll, we'll talk after.
So how is that answering the question about the CO for Habitat?
Ms. Gagliano, what our council has recommended is that a staff person has been in touch with him and asked for guidance, and through our attorney, he will respond to you directly.
I want to look at everything. We just, I just got contacted. I want to look through the whole thing.
Okay. So that was, I thought that was just with regard to our property. That's a totally...
Okay. I didn't know that. I, I thought you were talking about...
No. I, I understand what you're saying about the CO. However, the question about the CO...
So Ms. Gagliano, so what I want to, to make clear for you, City Clerk just corrected for us that it has to come through the...
The question about the COs has to be referred to the Department of Community Services to give him a chance to look into it. There's no, there's no way to answer that this evening.
Okay. Well, I'm assuming that you guys were aware that they had an offense today?
I, I, I can't speak to any of that. I would just defer to, to Aaron.
Okay. And then I also heard another comment came up, and I thought maybe that was from Ms. Zahn. And I was wondering if it was for the zoning board that she was asking a question about. And I wanted to make sure we have that in the record. There was something about approving exemptions. And so Mayor, I heard you explicitly agreed to take this up.
Yeah.
And so I wanted to make sure she, she heard that.
Yeah. I was, I was told by the city engineer that, that actually council would have to vote on that ordinance for...
Probably eventually we will. And so, but I think there is more information that needs to be gathered and looked into. And so that's why I'm making sure it's in the record and that you can be responded to. And even if it's something that has to do with zoning, that's not our purview, and we would make sure it's delineated in, in the proper way. So I just wanted to make sure. And then, since this is going to be, I, I will have the last word in response to Mr. Jacoby, so Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you. That's okay.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
That's okay. Thank you, Council President Protop. I just think it's a really good opportunity to do a reset here. I think we've all been through a lot of tough conversations, a lot of finger pointing, and I know everybody's frustrated. I know we've all been here since 6:30. But I think that this, the one thing I'd like to point out is that's, that's why sometimes we have to take our time up here. And that's why dialogue is good. And you know what? Like Marjorie and I disagreed tonight, but we actually talked about how we could work together on the sidewalk project at the end of the day. You know, we probably agreed more than we, we disagreed. But it's really good to have that dialogue. And it's okay to slow the process down and ask questions, and really think about things like sidewalks. So I just ask that, you know, we all think, can agree that it's okay to disagree sometimes, typically probably on the same page. But I think it's a good opportunity for a reset. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything? Because what I just wanted to, thank you for giving a, I would call it a more contextual response. And I, as I thanked Administrator Rogers for giving a very detailed, time-bound, and clarifying whether it, there are any legal issues. But the one thing I want to make sure the community hears, because you have people who are coming up and making accusations that are maligning character. And, and that is not something that is anywhere near the truth. And we want to make sure those little nuances, those seeds of doubt that would make you think a council person would purposely mislead, that a staff person would intentionally omit. And that is the one thing we wanted to make sure that you heard, because we're not worried about changing the minds of the people who will walk up here and mischaracterize responses that are given, and give you a little short shrift to make it sound like some, under, something underhanded is going on. We know that the strength of this city is the engagement of people who really care and don't want to divide, and don't want to destruct, but do want to make things better, and don't want to take down their neighbors in the process of it. So we're not worried about those folks. Those of you who are really coming and raising good questions, this council and this staff are committed to that. And that is what makes this an excellent community. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public heard that, and that unequivocally there was no intent to mislead the public in, in, in any way. And so I think that you'll have an opportunity to read in detail, but you have also heard context. And so if I can get a motion to adjourn? Or is there anything else on here?
Comment, new comments? I just have one super quick one.
I was going to say, I'm ready to go home, so...
Yeah. No, it's super quick.
No, no, no.
I just have a little bit of good news, which is, I got a little bit of information today from, from SDI about vacancy rates in some comparable towns, retail first-floor vacancies. So Summit's vacancy rate is less than 1% in the first-floor retail, and it's actually 0.71%. And Westfield's estimates are seven, their vacancy rate is 7%. Red Bank's is 5%, and Montclair's is 7.2%. So that gives you a sense of sort of how our downtown is doing compared to comparable downtowns. And I think it's something we can be really proud of, the partnership that we've had with SDI and the hard work that's done to keep our downtown as vibrant as it is. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you. Quick announcement.
I'm sorry. Can we get the paving question, Councilwoman?
Summit?
Oh, maybe that was the one.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have that information?
I, I have some. I'll give the best I have. So as we know, Summit Avenue is, is part of the county's 2022 paving program, delayed by utility work. As of last Friday, the county didn't have a set date. I didn't reach out to them this, this weekend, but I will stay on top of them. It's not getting any better, the road, but we hope shortly. Park Avenue is probably early to mid-June. The contractor's currently working on Tulip Street where he'll finish first and go back to Park. Division Avenue is likely the fall. I'll just use this opportunity to share, most people know, but the, the east, no, I'm sorry, the west side of the road is the New Providence. The east side is in, in Summit, so it's not easy to pave half a road. So we are working with them. At one of the next upcoming meetings, there'll be an agreement for council to vote on that we could work with New Providence together to, to pave the road the proper way, which was out, which is not doing half and half, so. But that likely would be fall, just because there's some, you know, logistical hurdles we have to get through.
And I heard, if I heard you correctly, you said Summit, you cannot, Summit Avenue, you can't predict that one?
I, I will keep calling the county, but as of late last week, they did not have a date yet. And it was primarily their contractor hasn't mobilized yet, which though it is May, I mean, you still have some colder temperatures overnight, so it's not that shocking, but they just don't have a date from their contractor yet.
Doctor Levine, did you want to...
Oh, quick announcement. Each year, our zoning board of adjustment creates an annual report, and the 2022 annual report is in the back of the council agenda packet. So you guys can look at that. I encourage you to. Each year, they sort of keep track of themes that keep arising, and they compile thoughtful suggestions for how potentially to modify the ordinance. And I would encourage the public to read it. Actually, it's written in very plain language, very well-written, and same with my colleagues here. There's some good ideas in there. So we can, we can take a look. Thank you.
Just real quick, from, from Community Services and Parking, I will send my update in the morning. Actually, David Guida was kind enough to send me a very lengthy update, but I'll save all of you the, the pain of listening to it tonight, so. But I just want to thank David for doing that, and I'll post it tomorrow.
Councilman Miniger, any, any other comments?
No, but I did want to ask about Morris Avenue, because I heard something interesting, which is actually good news, that although there's a 60- or 90-day settling period for that, we heard from the gas company, that it's going to happen after schools are closed. And that gives it a chance to be the entire length of Morris to be repaved. Is that right?
Yes, that, that is correct. It's, it's the first Monday after school is out. I forgot the date. I think June 26th.
22nd was what he said.
Yeah. I think they'll start that Friday, and then they'll do the real work that Monday, which might be the 20, whatever.
Thank you. So the last word I just want to say, May is mental health month. And so just like we take care of our physical selves, let's make sure that we are taking care of our mental health, our children, our seniors, and that we would just be kind to one another. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.